Okidok, folks, the applicant. Could I have the applicant, please?
Um, I don't see them in the room, madam chair. Hold on, let me scan the list again.
Um, if the applicant for two South Water is here, would you kindly raise your virtual hand?
Oh, I think it's, it's, uh, Michael Boander.
Okay, all right, there he goes. Okay, you got him or am I get, you got him, right?
Uh, he disappeared.
Well, I didn't get him. Michael Boder. Bender, probably. There he is, okay. And is he on his way in?
He should be. Hopefully.
You know what happens when we both click at the same time, right?
I, I, it could be the issue, I don't know.
Well, then we kick him back out. We've done that before. All right. Hello, Mr. Bender. If you would unmute yourself, you're ready to go. And if you would like to turn on your camera, you're more than welcome.
Hey, I don't know if I want to scare anybody.
Okay, that's your choice.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, it's Michael Boonder here with Edge Water Group Architects. We're, um, helping, uh, Masalaria, um, build this raised, uh, deck above the parking lot overlooking the river at two thousand South Water Street. We've been back and forth a few times with, uh, the, um, planning department and Marissa. And she's made some, you know, some suggestions to us and what we can move forward with. Um, one of which was the, uh, landscaping, adding some landscaping, which there was, there was a row of evergreens along Mill Street. Um, and we added where we, where we took out, where we formally took out two parking spaces because of the, uh, stair, the exterior staircase up to the deck from the, um, um, parking lot entrance. Uh, we added some landscaping there and we added some, um, alongside thirty-four, or thirty-three, thirty-two, and thirty-one space along the side there. Wasn't sure if it made sense to put it around the, you know, the corner down there between fourteen and fifteen. There was some discussion about possibly along the river. But I don't know, I don't, I don't see how we can really take out, much of that asphalt there without affecting the, the size of the parking spaces over there. And possibly losing any more, which I don't think.
Okay, so, so let's just. Let's just start from the beginning. Um, the way it's, the way it works for, for your application, you can't increase the non-conformity. Correct. And you, and you've lost somehow in the time since you were approved, you lost two parking spaces. And you lost, you will lose two more when you do the deck. So, we.
Correct.
The first thing is, you need to get to the point where your permanent seating, not the outdoor versus indoor, but your permanent seating, the total that you always have, is at the same level at, it meets the parking requirement. So that's the first thing. And from what I understood from Marissa yesterday, somebody stop me if I'm wrong, you weren't there yet. Then in regard to the landscaping, there were some specific recommendations from the Conservation Commission. The commission had also discussed, I'm the Conservation Planner, I'm sorry. And the commission had also discussed them with you, and we can jump in on that if you want. So let's start with the parking, uh.
With the parking, we'd be, we'd be happy to, I, I understand that we need to, um, accommodate the four spaces that are now somehow.
Yes, and, and what you need to do is reduce your permanent parking. Um, in, in some, you can either do it based on bar seats or dining seats, or a combination of both. So you have to do that. Now, that's, that's just to get yourself into not increasing the non-conformity. I, I believe we also mentioned, as long as we're at it, that we're going to put some conditions on you because we were a little worried. And we've always been a little worried about large outdoor parties, um, and gatherings that make a lot of noise. And we tend to put on restaurants of this nature, we tend to put conditions limiting your hours as well as amplified sound. Um, as regards the layout of the parking, um, Mr. McRae, did you have any comments on that?
Yeah.
You said something at the briefing yesterday.
I actually, uh, went out to take a look at it.
Oh, cool.
The, the spaces are um, inconsistent at best, in terms of, of size and, and layout. And I thought it might be a, a good idea is maybe taking a good, hard evaluation of the restriping that happened after it was, uh, after the driveway was sealed, to see if it can be reconfigured in such a way to create better standard-sized spaces, and possibly more of them. Um, it seemed a bunch kind of were kind of squeezed in, uh, but don't really work. Uh, there's some that are, you know, those couple, couple of they're out in the middle of nowhere, but have no relationship to back and forth. The compliant or the ADA spaces are furthest away from the building, uh, which I thought was kind of odd because there's three of them and you have to go up the sidewalk on the street to get to the front door, uh, because there was no ramps, that kind of thing. Uh, so I'm just wondering, was there any, uh, consideration of actually really going through this and doing a real hard survey of the spaces that are there, their sizes, and possible reconfiguration so you can add more spaces, so you can, uh, work on your non-conformancy.
Well, it's, um, I mean, the, this layout, this parking layout has been there like this since the beginning of time, really.
But, but you're, you're making a change to the building, so at this point, we could ask you to make compliant parking.
Well, we we cert, we can certainly to look at it. I don't know, um, you know, if you're, if you're, if you're going to make compliant parking as far as numbers or as far as configuration. Because if we, if we reconfigure it to make everything just perfect, perfect, there is a chance that we'll lose even more space.
Well, but that's not what Mr. McRae just said. Mr. McRae said you might get spaces. Because he said some of your spaces are too big and some of them are too small. So if you just restriped the parking so that it's, it's dimensioned correctly, that's where you're going, right, Mr. McRae? I don't mean.
Yeah, I give, I give a good example, actually. Space number one shows that it's, 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 it's adjacent to this triangular piece of land. Triangular piece of, it's actually not. It's actually almost right on top of the seawall, which is right atop of the property tonight. So that whole row of, of spaces really isn't correct on the plan in terms of what's actually out there on the, on the site. Then you take a look at space number forty or thirty-nine, and they're very thin and long. Uh, and then you take a look at, at space number twenty-five compared to, in the same room with space fifteen, twenty-five, you know, is much sho- shorter in depth than number fifteen. So i- it's almost that I'm looking at kind of a hap- haphazard layout here. And I'm thinking, can you actually go and really take a good, hard look at this, the available space? And reconfigure this in such a way so you may be able to get more spaces out there, lessen your non-conformity, and create a better parking situation for the restaurant.
We can certainly take a look at it.
I think additionally, it'd be really great if, if you wind up, as an example, wind up with, you know, more spaces than you need or something like that, could one of them be a tree? Because you basically have a, a building and a sea of asphalt. There's not one, there's not one, uh, green area in, in the parking lot. And the areas that you're proposing for landscaping are gravel at the moment. So, um, I think actually it's a kind of an interesting study to, can we make this actually better for the restaurant and better for Byram itself?
So you get to fifty-three parking spaces, fifty standard, three ADAs. You move, you move the ADAs closer to the building and you, you restripe it. Um, it's not an expensive thing to do because you're basically just painting it. Uh, seal coat and paint, right? Um, and you're just striping it and you're going to, you're going to standard if you get more than fifty-three tosses in a tree. Um, and then just so you know, uh, if, if you could do that, we'll accommodate you as quickly as we can. I know you've been here, you've been before us. We appreciate an extension on this. Uh, because at this point, you're still increasing the non-conformity, so we cannot approve it yet.
We've got to go to ARC still, right?
Um, do you want to go to ARC for the deck?
The decking and the lighting and everything else.
Well, okay, the lighting, you're right. We did, we talked about that yesterday. So you, you, he would schedule for ARC the first meeting they have in January. That's right. It's coming back to me now. We scheduled for the first meeting in January with ARC. But they're going to take one look at your parking and they're going to say the same thing we're saying to you right now. So if you're not horribly busy in the next few days, it would be good for you to lay out the parking.
No, has to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There you go. Keeps you out of trouble. It'll keep you out of trouble. So it shouldn't be complicated for you. Um, the town, um, where does he find the dimensioning and the requirements is all in the, um, engineering?
Six dash one eighty-five.
Six dash one eighty-five in our regulations. And it shouldn't be complicated for you to do. You, you're an architect, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so it shouldn't be complicated for you, you to do because you can just dimension it and lay it out and you, and, um, I, you know, so Mr. McRae, when you walked it, you thought that they had some spaces that were too wide and they might actually be able to get the fifty-three spaces.
I, I think it's a, it's a possibility, yes.
Okay.
Really take a really good look.
And we would absolutely love to see trees and you heard from the Conservation Department that they want anything you can get green that's by the Byram River would be great. Plus, it makes it more enjoyable for your guests.
Right.
Well, they won't be your guests. They'll be, they'll be the Matrilia, um, guests, so. Um, okay, so that's basically all we have to tell you. Um, did you have any questions for us and then we'll turn it to public comment?
Um, no, I, I watched you, you all last night prepping for it, so I, I pretty much understood what you were talking about again here tonight.
You know that you're the second person who thinks we met last night. It was, it was one o'clock in the afternoon. Oh, it was like around three.
Yeah, it was three. I'm sorry.
Just letting you know, so, okay, so we do have a comment.
Days and nights, or they're all the same.
I know COVID. So we're gonna bring you a comment. We're gonna have, uh, turn it to public comment or the commission doesn't have anything else right now? Okay, um, uh, Mr. Shahadi, I'm, I've just enabled you to speak.
Good afternoon, not good evening.
Hello, hello, Mr. Shahadi, hello.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Wonderful. Um, uh, my name's Al Shahadi. I am a long-term resident of Byram and speaking this evening in my capacity as the Chair of the Byram Neighborhood Association Land Use Committee. Um, I am updating and amending, uh, written comments that were submitted by Walt Rajowski, a member of our committee. On October twelfth, I believe his email is part of your package.
Yes, sir.
Um, at a high level, we still support the proposal. Uh, but our support at this point is more heavily qualified than before, and we'd like the commission to entertain some potential conditions.
Sure, tell us about them again so everybody can hear them.
So first, it's just at a high level, we'd like the proposal because one of our goals is the BNA is to increase the vibrancy and pedestrian activity in downtown Byram. And outdoor dining at a longstanding restaurant location, um, definitely helps that. So that's the big picture that we're coming from. Um, concerns, there's a handful of concerns. Um, we've heard some concerns from folks about uh, how the maximum seating is actually going to be enforced. So there is, the, the lack of detail in the package is concerning to us. The plans have very detailed outdoor seating plan. I did not see, and it might have been my going through this faster than I should have, I did not see an indoor seating plan for the time period that the deck was open. There is a reference to the first floor being closed, but there isn't anything about how the second floor, both bar and dining area are going to be organized. Uh, I do think that specifying what the number of indoor seats are and at least some rough layout of them, so you don't end up with a situation where the first floor is closed. And for whatever reason, there is more seating on the second floor and the total number is larger than what's allowed, uh, out of deck season. Um, second, this is partly a question, partly a comment. I do not really know what seasonal means. So are the indoor seating limits, say you put on here indoor seating limits as well as the outdoor seating limits, are those fixed from April to November? Or are you in a situation where, uh, the mix of an indoor and outdoor varies by day, varies by time of day, if you have a cold day?
So what we would normally do, um, Katie Penrick, step in if you, if, if you think you would change how we proceed. But what we would normally do is set dates with the applicant for what would be seasonal. And we would limit, um, the outdoor, uh, to a timeframe. And we're also thinking about while we're at it is limiting the hours that they're outside. And of course, limiting amplified music. Um, as we, I don't know if you listened yesterday, but we discussed a couple of applications which, which we have done that. The J House was one over in Riverside. Um, do you remember the old Gabrielle's? Uh, before it became the townhouse, um, and before that it was Lucas'. We did the same kind of thing there. Katie Pat, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I mean, just years ago, we changed the regs to read April one to no, to November one, was it Pat? Yeah, just. But a- at one point, we had every restaurant with their own set of rules. It was silly. It was difficult to, to monitor that. So we just, we just said, everybody's the same and you can come and go as you please during that, that timeframe in terms of whether you want to be outside or not. Um, and then people, you know, decide when they want to do it, if it's warm enough, whatever. Um, but it sounds like the commission may want to limit some other aspects of this, too.
So I, I saw the April to November dates in, in the, um, uh, staff memo. My question was a little bit more granular. Um, starting, if you go with the April first date, is the indoor seating limited to the maximum under, um, the outdoor opening? Um, at all times, April to November, or is it indoor on a rainy day? Is it's?
Outdoor on a sunny day? Yes. Okay, so the definition, so just, um, outdoor dining is operating on a seven-month basis, starting on April first and concluding on November first of any calendar year. Okay, so they don't go outdoors after November. Now, we made some exceptions during COVID and if there was a, an executive order again, of course, we would. But going back to, that would be in their approval that they have to follow the conditions of the regs. Are you, and then, and the total seating would then be indoor?
The total seating would be indoors after December first.
After November first.
After November first. And the, the maximum indoor seating, when there's outdoor seating, would be fixed regardless of weather, temperature, et cetera. Is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, I mean, you might want to do that in this case. We don't usually do that. In other words, let's say a restaurant is allowed to have a hundred seats. It's pouring rain for a week. Those hundred seats can be inside. And then when it's, you want to go back outside, fine, eighty stay inside. You can put your twenty outside or whatever your approval is. In other words, we give the restaurants the flexibility if, um, you know, based on how they want to handle it. But there's a cap on the total number of seats.
Right. So take us to the last point under the detail here is, um, I, I think the, you know, the, how does this get enforced? I, I think the members of the commission, I don't know the staff, are aware that the BNA has been in an extended conversation with zoning enforcement about twenty-one North Water Street, a block and a half away, with multiple egregious violations. And we're closing in on a year of that open and often productive, but sometimes frustrating conversation. And if something that egregious cannot get addressed, does the town really have the ability to?
What we do in these cases, Mrs. Shahadi, is, is we, we, um, the commission is the first to give an approval. So let's say they issued this approval. Um, we, we've always done with every restaurant in this instance is we have an annual administrative approval process. And we, we look and see whether any zoning violations from the last year. So you're not automatically granted this every year. If you, if you violate or you've been a problem, whatever, then, then, then you don't, then you don't get it the next year.
Yeah, that is very helpful to, to, to hear because our concern is given the parking issues, given the parking issues generally, uh, that if somehow that first floor were too open and that there was spill over to the street and a lot more people than the cap you've imposed, uh, come, that is going to negatively affect other businesses in Byram that we want to support. So that's very helpful to know. So thank you.
And, and, um, but just to throw this in, the commission is not unaware of the development in Portchester and we share your concern. You know we do.
Thank you.
Um, Miss, okay, go ahead, Mr. Shahadi. You got another question?
Yeah, so second issue is this, the larger lot configuration. Um, I read the Conservation Commission's, um, notes, their photographs, et cetera. And, um, I, I do think that adding something along the water, both for ecological reasons and appearance reasons, uh, would be helpful. I don't know the exact dimensions of what kind of buffer would be possible. But I would say that included in your mandate to Mr. Bender of rethinking the parking, um, I would ask that that rethink be done in the context of putting the kind of narrow buffer along the waterfront that the Conservation Commission, um, has suggested. Um, last but not least, which was.
Mr. Shahadi, I'm glad that you brought that up, uh, because I'm actually looking at a, a photograph taken in September two thousand eighteen that actually shows vegetation, significant vegetation on the outside of the seawall there. It seems to be completely gone today. And I think that's, that would be the question is, if it was there a year, two years ago, uh, even actually November to two thousand nineteen, where is it now and how did it get cut down and who cut it down? Because it seems even that, that wild vegetation that was growing out of the seawall or a small area that's there provided a little bit of green buffer to the site.
You have a, you have a picture you can share with us? That picture?
I'll send this to staff and they can send it up to everybody else.
It's in the staff report somewhere buried on page fifty or something like that.
Yes.
Last item that, uh, um, I'll raise, it was included in Mr. Rajowski's email. There are real sidewalk safety concerns, um, at the corner of Mill and, um, uh, South Water. The sidewalk narrows significantly so that the, uh, the disability access ramp, uh, essentially crosses the entire width of the sidewalk, combined with some very pretty but outside of lot line planters that were put by the former owner, means that you have a very narrow sloped area to, um, traverse. And in most days, it's fine, but, uh, particularly in the winter, as folks are heading to the train station in Portchester, or hopefully when COVID is behind us, will again be heading to the train station in Portchester. Um, it's a real safety concern. Um, and, uh, I'm not exactly sure what the committee can do to address it. I do think that any, any planters there should be within the lot line and not over the lot line.
Yes.
And I don't know if you have the ability to start a conversation to DPW to ask, why is this so narrow? Uh, but we would appreciate the opportunity that this application presents to flag that safety concern and see what can be done to address it.
Yes, we can, it, they have to be on the prop, within the property line. And, uh, the, we can talk to DPW. Actually, Mr. Shahadi, what we're really hoping is that the BNA's Land Use Committee will soon approach us with some ideas on how you would like to think about Byram in general and what you would like us to do for updating the Byram plan, whether you would like us to consider some sort of overlay zone that enhances, uh, that develops Byram Chickahominy the way you'd like to see. So that could be included, pedestrian friendliness could be included in a Byram update. Uh, and, and I know Katie and I have both reached out to you all. Um, we are always glad to hear from you regarding where you are.
I'm surprised Katie and Patrick are not smiling quietly because we've had two extensive conversations, even quite generous at the staff level. So it's me and Walt, um, with Katie and Pat talking conceptual stuff. They're educating us on what's possible. We're doing our, our own research. Um, at some point, we will have to do our own outreach to the community. So it's not just me speaking, but those conversations are well underway.
Um, Katie and I had talked, what, last year about you guys doing a charrette, thinking about the future, what can you, we do do? I'm so glad they've given you their time. I had reached out to Lucy a couple of times. So roll that into it, right, Katie? I think that makes sense, right? You guys, if you've been already chipping in on, chipping away at this, it would be good. Okay.
It happened.
So, yeah.
We're ready for that, we're ready for that poker game next week, too, by the way.
Wait, what?
I said our poker face is so good. We're, we're still on for our poker game next week.
That's great. I'm so glad. I'm so glad. Thank you, Mr. Shahadi. Um, okay, Mr. Bender, I think you have some good instructions here. Is there anything else that we, I don't see anybody else in the public who wishes to speak. Is there anything else?
No, I think, uh, I think it's very comprehensive, the comments. And, uh, we'll certainly take a look at it and see what we can do to address them all.
Yep, and we're happy to help.
Now that I have something to do.
Yes, I'm, I'm so glad we were able to help you in that regard.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Have a great night. All right, take care.
All right.
So happy holidays, too.
You too, Mr. Bender. Um, so our next application is MCJB LLC in Thomason, Virginia, daily. This is at forty-four and fifty Cutler Road for a final subdivision to revise the common lot line. Uh, the applicant is Chip Haslin. Uh, Mr. Haslin, whenever you're ready. Oh, you cleaned the pile.
I'm getting there. I've tried. I didn't have a P and Z, uh, any matters on your last agenda.
When you're done, when you're done, just come, you know, I got a desk, too. Okay, go ahead. So, Mr. Haslin.
Yes, uh, good evening, uh, Madam Chair, members of the commission, uh, for the applicants, Chip Haslin. Um, this matter was previously on an agenda and we postponed it because of the, uh, the Health Department requested that we supply a replacement area, uh, or show a replacement area for septic at, uh, fifty Cutler, which we've done. So I think we've satisfied all departments and any issues. Um, one comment from in the wetlands was that there were, uh, more recently updated surveys for these two properties that should be incorporated. To the extent that's true, when I provide the map to you for signature, I'll make sure that those, that information's included in the final survey.
Um, yeah, the comment was actually from Conservation.
Conservation, right.
Um.
We'll, we'll make sure that that's in fact the case. Um, these are two neighbors that are in a very friendly situation agreeing to this, uh, equal area exchange, so we'll make sure that we work to get this all done.
Okay, any comments or questions from the commission? No comments or questions from the commission. Do I have any comments from the public? Please raise your virtual hand. This is forty-four and fifty Cutler Road in the RA four. No comments from the public. Does anybody object to this application being closed and decided? Please raise your virtual hand. I mean, your regular hand. Sorry, I always do that. You can raise a virtual one. Okay, so, um, hearing no objection to closing, uh, we will close and Mr. McRae, we would happily entertain a motion.
Okay. Uh, forty-four fifty Cutler Road, application PLPZ, two thousand twenty-one, four one two. Final resubdivision, applicant seeking, uh, final resubdivision to make an equal area exchange. Uh, four thousand fifty-one point oh eight square feet of layout. Lot area to permit the construction of an accessory structure on forty-four Cutler Road in the RA four zone. Commission finds that the application meets the standards of six, uh, two fifty-eight, two, two ninety-seven, and three oh two of the Gretsch uh, subdivision regulations in section two oh five of the building zone regulations. And that this is neither a subdivision or resubdivision. Uh, both lots are created as a, uh, from lot nine as part of a lots that are approved in April of, uh, nineteen fifty-three. Um, and open spaces proposed with this application. Conservationist comments stated, uh, eleven one twenty-one indicating comments to the application. Zoning issue comments stated, uh, ten twenty-nine indicating that those meets the requirements of the BZR and endorse the project for its unpermitted sign-off. Uh, DPW issued comments stated, uh, eleven four twenty-one stating the lot line revision is acceptable. And Wetlands issued, uh, for a needs questionnaire dated nine fifteen twenty-one indicating no action required. Therefore, motion to approve the application noted in the following. Uh, prior to the mapping recorded, her conservation suggestions as both forty-four and fifty properties have, uh, separate new surveys which each year the existing conditions, the survey showing proposed lot line revision that should be updated to reflect those current conditions accurately and avoid future confusion. The applicant shall abide by any old revisions outlined in the original nineteen fifty-three, nineteen fifty-five subdivision approvals. And the applicant is to address any outstanding or staff or internal issues.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lowe has seconded that. Mr. Yaski, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Goss?
Aye.
Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Mr. Lowe?
Aye.
Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes five, nothing. And our next application is, thank you, Mr. Haslam. Our next application is from Mr. Hegney. And it is for one eighty-seven Shore Road LLC for a final coastal site plan at one eighty-seven Shore Road in the R twelve and the coastal overlay zone. And is Mr. Hegney's there? I got him, Pat. And he's joining. So it's not at, okay, hello, Mr. Hegney.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. For the record, Tom Hegney on behalf of the applicant. This is a coastal site plan application for a property on the west side of Shore Road and Old Greenwich. We're proposing to demolish the existing house and driveway and construct a new house and driveway. The new home will be forty-three and a half feet from the front property line. This is the minimum that it can be because Shore Road in this area is deficient in right of way, which increases the setback to the forty-three and a half feet. The parking area will be removed from the rear and located in the front of the properties where there will be a loop driveway and garage. This actually reduces the overall pavement on site by four hundred and sixty square feet. Our landscape architect, Bill Rutherford, has prepared a planting plan with a twenty-five foot buffer along the shoreline. And we can use this plan to work with the DEP on the issue they had with work that was being done within the coastal jurisdiction area. Our certified soil scientist, who's also a landscape architect, Bill Kenny flagged the wetlands. And Pat, maybe we could bring up slide four from the presentation material. I asked Bill to prepare a letter which we just a little while ago sent over to staff, but asked him to be present for the meeting so that he can go over it with you. And he should be showing up, Pat, if you can't find him. In his letter, he explains why the wetland title wetland flagging that is shown on the survey is correct and should be the demarcation line for title wetlands. And Bill, now that you've joined us, if you could review the letter that you just sent to me with the commission.
Sure. Good evening. I'm Bill Kenny, the principal of William Kenny Associates. I'm a professional wetland scientist, soil scientist and landscape architect. And we did, we visited the site in July of this year to map out the wetlands. And we found tidal wetlands. We mapped the boundary. And that boundary was was picked up and is shown on the project drawings. I recently received the memo, the Conservation Commission memo regarding
Patrick, if there's a better drawing that shows the red line and the blue line and that we were looking at yesterday.
That was part of the Conservation Commission
Would you mind if we use that one, Mr. Kenny? Because it's clearer to everybody what you're talking about that way. Would you mind? Okay. Pat, you think
Not at all. If I remember.
Yeah, Pat's gonna look for it again. He had, we challenged him with page numbers yesterday on that one.
Three or something of the agenda.
I think it's one sixty-one on the full agenda, page one sixty-one on the full agenda.
So, but maybe I could continue to describe
Go ahead and you talk. Yeah, great idea.
Great. So tidal wetlands are mapped. Two primary factors for mapping tidal wetlands are the elevational and vegetation that's found. And in the Conservation Commission memo included a portion of the state definition, which I agree with. And I, in my letter, also restated that definition. And so the two factors, those two primary factors, elevation and vegetation are primary factors. Now, the elevation at this site becomes critical to the conclusion that I have where I support the line that I mapped versus the recommended boundary at elevation six. And it just comes down to the statute says that tidal wetlands can be found up to one foot above extreme high water, which is the one-year tide. So one foot above the one-year tide, which in this area, and that that tide varies wherever you are around the world. In Greenwich, Old Greenwich, it is elevation five point six. So by statute, this is written right in the state statute. The tidal wetlands don't extend, they extend up to elevation five point six. And that's that's generally where my line is shown. And then and then you need certain vegetation beyond that. So the there was, so the by statute ends at elevation five point six. So that's that's a driving reason why I put the line where we put it. There were also some vegetation that was mentioned that were found landward of my line.
Yeah.
And that was used used as a reason of perhaps changing the line location. Three of the four plants that were listed are are actually, they're not on the list in the state statute. The state statute lists some seventy different plants or so that are considered tidal wetland plants for tidal wetland mapping. And the three of the four plants were not on there. The fourth plant is easily confused with one of those three. The high tide bush and the ground cell tree are very similar. And it was noted in the memo that only remnants of these plants were found. So the fact that they were above the tidal, the stat, the state statute elevation and that that was just remnants of the plant material. I I think that it's and only one of the four plants that were listed are are within the, on the list in the state statutes. That's why I conclude that the line as I mapped is is appropriate for this property.
Let me answer the question in a different way. If you wanted to be more progressive in terms of sustainability than what the statute requires you to do, would you be able, would you be able to change this? And and we discussed this yesterday without reducing in a negative way, the owner's enjoyment of their backyard because they do have a limited sight. And we would like to respect their right to enjoy it. But at the same time, if you were going to go sort of further than the statute and you've read where the governor is headed with the executive order and the mandates on on what they, he wants agencies to do. If you were teaching that class, what might you do? And I don't mean it as a trick question, but would you go further? And we understand there's a seawall. But what would you do if you were doing the master class on this? And 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 then would you, what would your client accept? And when we know you're going to filter it with that, but what would your client accept you're doing?
Right. I'm going to provide some commentary. I have not spoken, I've I've never spoken with the client.
Okay, well, Mr. Hegney's a good surrogate. Oh, we lost you, Mr. Kenny.
Yes.
Is Mr. Tebby a part of your team? Or horse Tebby, is that part of your team, Mr. Hegney?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Kenny.
Sure. You know, legally, where the line falls with your board is perhaps, I think, is something different than what like what you're asking for. And as I review
Yes, because we'll always accept, we'll always accept greater sustainability, even though the state may still be thinking about it.
Right. I think that the planting plan that's been proposed is a good compromise. So that shows naturalizing an area beyond the landward of the tidal well and boundary that I've that I've mapped according to the statutes and also provide some lawn area for the property owner. So I think that buffer that's being proposed is a is a is a good buffer. All the, I I agree with all the selection of plant material. And
I hope so. You did it, right?
No, I didn't. I'm sorry.
Bill Rutherford.
Oh, that's right. Okay. All right. So I thought that you had done the plant selection is because you're the scientist.
On this project, all I did was map the the wetlands.
Okay.
And
All right, okay.
So Mr. Rutherford is here with us also, Madam Chair. And I did have a chance to speak with him yesterday about the type of lawn material. And he indicated that it would be a particular kind of fescue, which is both salt tolerant and drought tolerant. And that the the bed for the other plant material actually is a little higher. So it feeds in, the lawn would feed into that. And so you do get that buffer that the commission likes to see between
The commission, the commission requires, not just likes to see. Just making sure you're paying attention, Mr. Hegney.
The the language that was adopted last year regarding these types of buffers doesn't specify the distance.
No, it does not.
It says what's appropriate, given the conditions. And here, we we have a seawall and then we have an area that is within the coastal jurisdiction. And then we have additional area, which we're showing on on Mr. Rutherford's plan as very extensive plantings, I would say. We're also removing the driveway from the rear. The front driveway is permeable pavement.
Yes, and you got kudos for that. You got kudos for that from Conservation.
So overall, this is a, since it's Len rather than Tony on this. This is a much better plan. It's not even a good plan. This is a much better plan. And
I got Tony later on.
Yeah. So
All right.
Uh, we we think we're bringing something to you that meets not only the state statutes, but also how you've been applying this locally on the site plan applications.
As you know, Mr. Kenny, we left it, we discussed a distance, a set distance. And we felt that some lots just did not lend themselves and felt that it could be unfair to the homeowner at this point. We just want to see people of in good faith keep doing more because we think it's going to be mandated eventually anyway. So we might as well get ahead of the curve. If this is all I can extract from you, I will be disappointed. But Mr. Rutherford, if you would consider going beyond Mr. Kenny's demarcation, we would be grateful. And then
Is Mr. Mr. Rutherford, Mr. Rutherford is available to speak?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a question for him.
Okay.
Mr. Royal, if you could bring up page, the landscape plan, it's two sixty-five of our agenda. Mr. Rutherford, the planting plan, the landscape plan shows the beds kind of snaking around towards towards the water. Are those existing beds or is these going to be new new areas that are going to be planted? Is this going to be new construction?
The I think I've got thirty-seven some odd plants down around there and they come out beyond Bill Kenny's line. Oh, it's William Rutherford, I'm the landscape architect on the project. And I also documented going up the property line. And it also goes on the neighbors. Plantings I actually did for former owners thirty years ago. So there are some native plants in there. There's a lot of Rosa regosa, which is very salt tolerant. But I've got all those new plants. If you see on one of the sheets, there, that area which I planted was flagstone with a grass in between it. So there was a whole paved area down there, which is all being removed. And that whole area is being replanted, except for the small little walk that goes to the dock. And, you know, I'm coming out twenty-five feet. I'm looking at Bill Kenny's plan, some areas I'm probably, you know, six, seven, eight feet away. But I have gone beyond Bill Kenny's plan. I did that on purpose.
Okay, so then basically the area that actually on this lot, then the neighbor's lot, that's actually kind of an existing buffer. And then the new is more along their their own seawall, the high tide bush, the bayberry, that kind of thing.
Yeah, all yeah, all the way, I've got high tide bush, the bayberry, and then the what is it? The Rosa virginiana, which by the way is Alexandra's favorite rose, which we use now. So I use that in this case. And then that goes over to that phragmides that's between the two property lines to the north. So that that all whole area from the seawall coming in anywhere from twenty-two to twenty-five feet is all being replanted. And and the sod is coming out and all the flagstone there is coming out.
Okay, so what, what? I think the thing to do, what I'm going to ask again, that you you consider whether you could widen that, whether you could move it up some. And and just ask you to, and just ask you as a request. You do, you have indicated that you will work with DEEP to remove that paved area and the necessary permits and address it with them. Alexandra also commented that you have a compost area that has a stockade fence that's within the tidal wetlands.
Yeah, that's all being removed.
And that's going to be removed.
There is some phragmides.
Yeah, and you're going to take care of that. You're going to remove the phragmides.
Right.
And I believe that that was all you had outstanding here. Ms. Mock did comment that that she would have liked to have seen the house closer to the street. But I understand, given that it's Shore Road, that having a parking area in front of the house is helpful. Anybody else from the commission have comments? No comments from the commission. Does anybody from the public wish to comment on this application? Again, this is one eighty-seven Shore Road for a final coastal site plan. No comments from the public. Does anybody object to closing and deciding this application at this time? Nope. Okay, so with that, we will close the application. We will take a motion. So, Mr. McRae, not despairing, I would still like to see us ask the applicant to consider additional tidal planting beyond what the title, the the demarcation would require. And then we have the the deep issue and they have indicated already on their landscape plan that they're removing that compost area. So I don't really think we need to speak to that. And with that, over to you, Mr. McRae.
Okay. One eighty-seven Shore Road, application PLPZ twenty 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 twenty-one four six seven coastal, final coastal site plan. Applicant seeking approval to demolish the existing residence to construct a single family dwelling cool and related site improvements in the R twenty CO and COZ zones per section one eleven, six one eleven of the building zone regulations and section twenty-two A dash ninety and twenty-two A dash ninety-six of the Connecticut State General Statutes. Whereas such a property straddles the X AE thirteen and VE sixteen flood zone and has direct frontage, excuse me, indirect frontage on Greenwich Cove. Commission finds that zoning issue comments on twelve sixteen twenty-one hitting the proposal meets the requirements of the building zone regulation endorsed it for permit sign off. Super division issue comments stated twelve fifteen twenty-one noted concerns to be addressed during P and Z review phase. And engineering issue comments on twelve And engineering issue comments on twelve sixteen twenty-one indicating recent part is on building permit. Approval, uh, conservation issue comments stated, uh, twelve nine twenty-one indicating concerns with the plan. DEEP issue comments stated, uh, twelve sixteen indicating concerns with the plan. And wetlands issued a permission questionnaire on ten four twenty-one. Therefore, motion to approve the application noting the following. Uh, the application has submitted a signed letter to planning its own staff dated twelve sixteen acknowledging receipt of the super division comments. Easy staff is to provide a copy of the acknowledgement to the super division for the records. Uh, prior, uh, to zoning building permit, the applicant is to obtain DEEP approval for the work within the state regulatory jurisdiction. The final plan of the regulatory jurisdiction areas to review by PZ staff and conservation staff. For a conservation comment dated twelve nine twenty-one. Request is to explore additional title plantings above the jurisdiction line. To approximate elevation six. Is that correct? This is a album.
Yes. No, we don't ask them to go to, we're just asking them to do anything additional.
Just additional.
Would they consider something additional?
Something additional. Okay, great. Okay. And the applicant shall address, uh, any known or remaining staffing or departmental issues.
Do you have a second for that? Ms. Goss has seconded. Mr. Yeski, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Goss.
Aye.
Mr. McRae.
Aye.
Mr. Low.
Aye.
Albin is also aye. And with that, the motion passes five, nothing. Our next application is Kyle T. Milne and Rosa Nini. For a final subdivision and confirmation of a lot at forty-eight Paxton Road in the RA two. The applicant is being represented by Mr. Hassan. If you would go ahead, Mr. Hassan.
You're muted, Mr. Hassan.
Mr. Hassan. Whoa, gotcha.
There you go. I'll start again. Good evening again, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Chip Hazen for the applicants. Pat, I think it might be helpful if you could call up one of my maps. It's, um, the most recent map for, uh, these applicants, uh, created in November of two thousand twenty. It should be exhibit C, I think, near the end of my, uh, submission. I have it as page one twenty-six of one thirty-nine to give you some idea. So everyone can take a look at it and see what we're talking about. I'll start.
Yeah.
Because I know you got a long night ahead. Uh, these are two tax, uh, parcels. And have existed as two tax parcels since the nineteen forties. One of them is two point nine four seven acres and the other is one point nine five six acres. They're both owned by my clients. And, um, they were initially part of a twenty-one acre piece, which is owned by McAvoy in nineteen eleven. McAvoy split off a portion, uh, to, uh, Twackman of ten acres back in nineteen nineteen. Uh, and then in nineteen thirty-seven, what's now lot one, which you'll, you'll see in a second is the Eastly, uh, most, uh, lot, was conveyed to Canyon and, uh, in nineteen forty-seven, lot two was conveyed, uh, to Burke, both out of Twackman. Both separate chains of title, other than the fact that initially nineteen nineteen, they were both of Twackman. And, uh, for reasons unknown, but I can, I can, uh, hypothesize. In nineteen fifty-two, Burke conveyed out a very small portion of lot two containing point oh four four acres, or about nineteen hundred square feet to the property to the west of her. And, uh, I think this is probably done because that property had been acquired out of bankruptcy, by a man by the name of Volkmar. And I think he, he got it on the bankruptcy of, um, Ms. Burke's parents, uh, who owned the property previously. And for whatever reason, simultaneously with his then selling that property, uh, a few months later, this small piece was conveyed out to him, which I think runs along, uh, the driveway that you can see to the west or the bottom of the map. There, which serves, uh, the rear lot, which is known as, uh, fifty-two Paxton. So if you, if you go along that line, um, right at the bottom here, Pat, I really can point out, I guess, but yes, that's the line right there to your left. That's was straightened and I think it was probably because the road encroached, uh, into, uh, the Burke piece or lot two. Uh, but even I'm just speculating that I can't see any other reason why that would have been done. But it had the effect of reducing the size of the Burke property from the two acres to the one point nine five six acres. Both lots remained conforming at that time. Uh, it was still zoned for one acres. Uh, so that, uh, neither had been rendered non-conforming. In, uh, nineteen fifty-seven, so five years after, uh, Burke made this small conveyance to Falkmore, uh, the town upzoned this area to two acres. And, uh, so lot two, the bottom lot, the one which is the lot initially tonight, uh, became, uh, legally non-conforming. Um, it was in separate ownership from lot one. In fact, as I said earlier, lot one and lot two went from totally different chains since the nineteen nineteen ownership of Twackman. But in any event, uh, lot two became a non-conforming, legally non-conforming, uh, lot in nineteen fifty-seven. And then in nineteen sixty, both lots, uh, were conveyed out to Adzip, in one deed, so that the ownership, um, became identical in both, uh, lot one and lot two. And, uh, the, the properties both maintained their separate tax identifications and, and due to the state. So from the nineteen forties to this current day, uh, two, uh, separate tax identifications. Lot two has never been developed in any form or fashion. I presented you with the DPW, uh, cards with, uh, that in mind. And as you can see, everything pertains to lot one and not to lot two. Um, there's no driveway on lot, uh, two that serves lot one. There's nothing of any nature that serves, uh, lot one on lot two, other than it's a rectangle that was shown on an aerial that we presented to you. And that's in fact, a, uh, a garden, uh, which, uh, is, has been used by lot one. It's just a garden surrounded by a, uh, fence, which is four feet tall, so it does not constitute a structure. Uh, and in fact, as we plan to remove it, um, anyway, I did submit a picture of it yesterday. So if you wanted to look at that somewhere in the packet, but I don't think you need to deliver that right now. I just want to see it. Um, so that's the only relationship whatsoever from lot one, lot two, as far as the use. Occasionally and intermittently, that area that you see above the wetlands is mown, but that's the, the extent of it. Uh, so I do not think that as far as, uh, merger is concerned under state law, that that has actually taken place. Um, the issue then is how does six dash nine of your regulations apply? And you will recall that, uh, six dash nine provides some relief when you have a situation like this where a lot is made non-conforming and that is you drop down to the lesser zone, which in this case would be the RA one zone for the, uh, area requirements. And, uh, uh, this, as we've indicated, the lot number one is actually oversized lot. So you've got two point nine five acres. I think the commission was saying yesterday in the briefing session, why don't you just convey the point oh four four acres that you need from lot one to lot two and be done with it? And clearly my clients would be more than happy to do that because it's a minuscule portion of their lot one. But for the fact we have several challenges here and, uh, we've been working with SC Minor for several months. So I'm overcoming or trying to overcome those challenges. Including where would you take this area from? Uh, the accessway creates some challenges at the top. The setback for the principal house on, uh, lot one creates some challenges. But more importantly, what happens once you make lot two, uh, conforming with the area requirements, then you're back up to the RA two zoning requirements. And so it becomes catch twenty-two for my client. Yes, it then becomes a conforming lot, but then it may not be a buildable lot anymore because you can't meet the seventy-five foot setback requirements.
Oh, and, and you'd, and you'd have to get in the hundred foot, but, and you want to do the two, instead of a two hundred foot circle, you want to do a hundred foot circle.
Well, a hundred and fifty foot. Yeah. And, and I've, and I've got wetlands there too. So we've got, you know, some real challenges if in fact we lose that.
Yeah. Um, but okay. Now we can't talk to you about development. So we're going to switch back. I, we understand that you've got a trade-off here. Our real question that we can ask you is, we would have liked to have seen it corrected and in our minds, six, nine would apply here. And we're not understanding, you are choosing not to apply six, nine because it is an inconvenience for you is for the, for the development of the lot. Is that, is that, would that be an unfair paraphrasing?
It's, yes, to a certain extent. And I was, um, I cited in my narrative letter, the case of Schultz versus Berlin. It's a Connecticut Supreme Court case, which is somewhat similar in that there was two lots like this. And the suggestion was made by the town that, uh, you do, they had a very similar six dash nine in their regulations, that you make a conveyance from one lot to the other. But doing that, it made the first lot that you're conveying from non-conforming. And the court said, well, that's.
Well, but we're not, so that's not applicable here. We're not making your first lot non-conforming. So I couldn't figure out why you would cite that. So let's just go back to, you would still have a conforming first lot. What we're not understanding, there's two things that were troubling us yesterday. You do have use of the second lot because you have a garden and you'll have a use. Somebody has gardened, somebody has used it as part of their property. You have a property that's owned in common. Um, it has the same owner. And so our question is really why in your mind has not, this not been a de facto merger? We understand the tax issue that you're saying it's been paying taxes separately. But there are other factors we're seeing, which is the common ownership and the fact that you have an intrusion onto the other site that would indicate that you have used them as one property.
Well, I'm not sure if just maintaining a garden on a lot constitutes a use that creates.
You know what? I'm not allowed to use my neighbor's land as a, as a garden. So that's how I was thinking about it yesterday. I can't go over to my, wait, hold on a second, Nick. I can't go over to my neighbor's house and put a garden in. So therefore I'm doing that because that's my land. Go ahead, Nick.
Uh, Mr. Hasland, I, um, I take exception as to the classification of the garden structure that's on the vacant lot. Uh, I'm looking at your picture yesterday and I see what you're talking about, the fence. I see some kind of a, maybe a fountain structure in the middle of that garden. I'm looking at a, uh, uh, aerial view online. I'm seeing some kind of a stair structure from one property to the other. Uh, I, I, to me, because I'm kind of seeing a little bit of this and a little bit of that, so almost, I'd like, I'd like to go out and walk the site to see what's out there. Uh, the survey doesn't indicate any of this, but I'm seeing images of it. And I, you know, I think it would be very important to get clarified and get cleared up what this thing is out there and how it's connected to the other piece of property.
And we would ask you not to disturb the site if we were to do that.
No, that's fine. Um, yeah, my clients are good, uh, agree to that. Um, and we would accommodate, uh, uh, any commission members and staff that would like to, uh, view the property at any time. I had, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I've had situations, I know there have been, uh, others, not just my cases, where we've had tennis courts on a property like this. And those have been deemed not to be a use that's been associated with the principal property. And I think that's much greater than, uh, maintaining a garden. But anyway, it's neither here nor there.
That tennis court was our, our last case we had, I think, on lot merger. And that was in, uh, Old Greenwich or Riverside. And there was a tennis court on one court and, um, one lot and a house on the other lot. And, uh, right, that was not deemed to be a merger, uh, merger, uh, intent to merge the properties, if I'm correct.
I'm not familiar with that particular case, but I know I've had several of those myself and I've, I've seen them too. So yes, but in any event, I'm not going to quibble with the commission on, on what constitutes the use. I'm just laying out, uh, our, our case for why we would like to have this confirmed as a lot under state law. And, uh, and the difficulties we have, although it would seem on its face that we could just, uh, take a little property from lot one. And again, we'd be more than willing to do that or more than that. But the challenges make this really a non-buildable lot on lot two, which was not the intent of the original owner who kept it in sector ownership.
I have to be, I cannot comment on that much as I have to bite my tongue. Okay. So all we can do is look at this situation. Um, I would. I'd like our council to look at it. Does anybody have an objection to that? Does, do people have thoughts on this?
I think to kind of establish that, uh, uh, merger situation. There's a series of boxes to be checked off on that. Uh, it's not just one particular factor. It's, it's a bunch of things. And I think, uh, we should have an opportunity to kind of go through that to see how many of those boxes have been ticked here just by the existing conditions. Uh, you know, we have the, the garden in the, the, we have the garden and the stair, but what is the intent? What is, uh, what are the records actually show? So I think we need a little bit more time on that.
And Mr. McRae, we, it, um, it'd be helpful too, if Mr. Hassan could do exactly what you just said. Explain how he thinks it did or did not merge, because it's easier for, for the law department, I think, to react to something. Um, so it'd be helpful to, to understand Mr. Hassan's points regarding six dash nine and the five points of merger that you were referring to and checklist, et cetera.
Mr. Hassan, uh, Mr. Hassan, would that be an okay thing with you? Give a, a simple brief on the, uh, uh, contrary argument to, uh, merge?
Yes, of course.
Go ahead. Sorry. Go ahead, Katie.
I was just going to say into that, and obviously you have to have time to do it. And then we have to have, um, our council react to it. How about a full extension?
Yes.
Cause you've got a must, this is a must decide tonight and I, I just don't think we're prepared.
No, I understand it. And I know you are really backed up with lots of matters and they keep on coming in the door. And I do have some work to do too. So, um, and, and we'll, so, uh, town council. So yes, that's, that's fine.
And, and we'd like to really just get very clear on some, it, it's good for us to really lay this out and have the history. Um, if you could do that, the comment, um, yeah, a lot of it you have already gotten. When the non-conformity began, when the common ownership recommenced. Um, and, cause that, I had a little trouble figuring that out. I was trying to find my way through the deeds. But when the common ownership recommenced.
I was nineteen sixty, I'm an Adzip holder.
Correct.
And, and then, oh, so it was nineteen sixty, she's smarter than I am. And, um, and then the other question, um, I just lost my train of thought. Um, but, um, we asked you not to disturb the existing, how it's laid out right now. But why the entire time, you're confirming the entire time you did not, you had two separate tax slots, correct? And as I remember seeing that.
Yeah. So prior to the upzoning, it was separately, post, uh, the upzoning tax separately, it stayed tax separately.
Okay. Is there anything else the commission would like to see from Mr. Hassan? Cause I think Katie's making a good point. Let's make it easier for our council to give us an opinion. Anything else?
Is Adzip an individual or a company?
She was an individual.
Okay.
Elizabeth Adzip, I think was her name.
Okay.
Yeah. I know this is a tricky, a tricky one. And, uh, I'll, I'll tell you that when we were working, uh, on this and trying to make it work. And then, um, I remembered the Malazi case that you had last January and February on Zero Byram Shore Road. And, uh, where Casey O'Donnell was the attorney on that particular matter. And, and I reviewed it again and it seemed that the facts were very similar in that there was common ownership there. Granted, most recently they tried to split it out or sell it out as two separate lots. But you, the commission found in favor of, um, the lot confirmation by vote of five to zip. And, and I thought that we tracked fairly closely to that factual situation. And, uh, and therefore, uh, it was, uh, I recommend to the client that we consider rather try and do a lot line revision and make this thing work when we were having trouble with it, is to come in for the lot confirmation. So that's why we're before you on this.
Uh, Mr. Hassan, quick question. Uh, Wetlands had issued a corrective action.
Yes.
Is that been resolved?
Yes, we had a permit. Um, there was a deer fence in there that was too close to, uh, did not have a permit, first of all, and it was too close to grade. So we got a permit, raised it up, um, off the ground and, uh, it's been signed off on by Wetlands.
Thank you.
Okay. So if you give us the extension, we will leave it open. And, um, we will see you. If you can give us some time, that's great. But it doesn't look like, oh, wait. I have a hand up for public comment. Thank you very much. And it is a person that I recognize. Okie dokie. Ms. Beargets, if you would kindly go ahead. My apologies for not having, um, seen that you had your hand up.
No, thank you, Madam Chair and Commission. Uh, I am a resident at forty-six Paxton Road. And I know that five of our neighbors have submitted letters to the commission for your consideration. And so I didn't hear them discuss, so I wasn't sure of your protocols. So my apologies.
No, please go ahead.
Um, so we, um, our neighborhood is against, well, I guess we can't really figure out what's going on. Uh, they have the amount of property that they could designate it a buildable lot. Even though it's been recognized as unbuildable, but they're choosing not to because it could not be buildable. So it's a little confusing that they don't.
So, and that's the thing we asked them to deflect from. So all we have, what was before us is the question of, is this, is this lot been merged with the, have these lots been merged into one lot or not? And the rough part for us is that we can't comment on the development itself. So we can't say anything about that because that question's not that application is not before us. We just have to decide whether this is a legal lot. Right now it is smaller than the area. But because it was made what we call legally nonconforming. When the regulations changed, it is allowed to be developed technically. Unless it has merged with the other lot. And so again, we have to decide if it has been merged or not. And that's what's before us now. Mr. Hasland made some comments about why he would not want to merge it in terms of development. And we can't respond to those because that's not the question. So it's really hard for us because we gotta keep our blinders on. Does that help at all?
I, yes. And so I don't know if it's helpful to give some historic perspective, but we've lived at forty six Pexlin River for twenty, almost twenty five years. And we've been with the previous owners. We were very friendly with their neighbors and his wife had Alzheimer's the last ten years of her life. And they walked up and down that driveway every day. They sat on a bench on that lot that's being considered tonight. They looked at the garden. They visited with the stream. There's a fence there. They walked on the entire property for every day that we saw them. We saw them outside using that property as a continuous piece of their entire estate. So it was never considered separate and they didn't use it as such. So I don't know if that's helpful.
Very helpful. It's it's good to know. Ms. Goss, did you have a question?
That was the prior owners, so before nineteen sixty?
Those are the nineteen until two thousand and eighteen, when the husband finally, well, not finally, but passed away. But until the twenty five years that we've been there, that's what we saw them do every single day that the Mr. And Mrs.
Oh, I'm sorry. I accidentally muted you. If you would, if you would unmute yourself, I'm sorry.
Mr. And Mrs. Who?
Mr. And Mrs. Alonso C have been the owners in from nineteen, I think seventy something until two thousand and eighteen, when Mr. Alonso C Senior passed away. And for the twenty five years that almost the twenty five years that we've been next door neighbors, we saw them every day walk down their driveway, sit on their bench right there and utilize their entire property and look at the stream and look at the garden. And there's a path that you'll see if you visit the site. And there's also a fence that joins the Pexlin Road that they used and their contractors use to rake leaves and bring in leaf blowers and things of that sort. So the property was never separate. It was always together in the twenty five years almost that we've been there and we've watched this family and have been neighbors with them.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, my apologies. I'm every now and then I do that. Thank you, Ms. Goss, Ms. Beargets. Our next speaker is Robert Gess. If you probably know him, right?
Yes.
Can you, thank you, Madam Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. We can hear you.
And just a point of clarification, the Cs, as Janine had said, lived at that property for, you know, many years since certainly the early seventies. And Mr. C passed away in two thousand and eighteen. The property was then in the in the in the ownership of his son and his daughter until the property was sold in January of two thousand and twenty to the current owners. And in addition to the garden and the stairway, which Secretary McCree noted, there was also a small bridge that they built over the stream. That's that's in the in the in the pictures here. Mr. C, even in his eighties, I worked with him on the property and helped him install some sprinkler lines out onto the second part, second lot. So he having had some roughneck oil experience in Texas years ago, in his eighties was still laying, you know, sprinkler lines down his driveway to service that other piece of property. And I can tell you that he was very proud of that pond and tried to and kept it clean and had a small fence that he had around it and would work that property. The gardens and the property on both sites were maintained by Mrs. C, who was president of, I believe, either Hortalis or the Greenwich Garden Club, was a noted horticulturalist. And obviously planted and maintained both sets of properties. So within our knowledge and our neighbors' knowledge, you know, these properties have been property in common. And, you know, in our humble opinion, you know, have been merged under under our opinions of the state statute. So we'll be interested to see when you view the property and what your findings are. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gess. Our next speaker is Michael Levin.
Greetings, everybody. Can you all hear?
Yes, Mr. Levin, go right ahead.
So I am the west, I'm the neighbor to this lot and question on the west side. And I just wanted to add about the garden that's on lot two. So this particular garden can only be accessed through lot one. And it's always been treated as a as part of lot one, where Mr. C would come out and maintain this garden. It was never a separate entity. This was always a continuous extension of his lot one. I don't think it's fair that we all of a sudden develop lot two and call this a separate entity. It just, that's not the natural landscape of the property. It's continuous to lot one. There's a stream that separates part of lot one and supposedly part lot two. So that should be taken into account.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
And that, anybody else in the public wish to speak? Again, my apologies. I, oh. Well, Ms. Gess, you have your hand back up. I'll, I'm gonna go ahead and let you talk. Normally, we don't let people speak twice, but.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I just wanted to address Mr. McCree's question about the the fence or the wetlands infraction that was noted. And it's been reported, my understanding, again, that the fence has collapsed in the wetlands and has not been rectified. And so that's a direct blockage of the stream and the ecosystem that's connected to the stream, the pond, and ultimately the Byron River and the Long Island Sound. So there's been another complaint filed about the wetlands and that fence, and the fence has collapsed in the wetlands and is blocking the flow of the stream.
And you and somebody has complained to the Wetlands Agency?
Yes. And I believe it was in one of the neighbors' testimony or comment and letter, a photo that was taken as of yesterday.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Beargets.
Thank you again.
Mr. Levin, we don't normally let people speak twice. If you wouldn't mind just sending us an email for the next meeting. And we and we'll, we'll hear you then. And I promise I won't forget to call on the public. If not, somebody will remind me. So if you would mind, the next time we hear this application, which will probably be in late January, Mr. Hasland?
No, no, it's got to be in late February.
Okay.
We are absolutely booked and in full beyond what you would enjoy. Because I know how much you enjoy these late nights. We are cannot accept anything prior to January, to the February fifteenth meeting.
Okay. Alrighty. Okay, well, it keeps us off the streets.
Obviously, we'll get people on sooner if if that becomes, that becomes available. But we really, I'm serious, we really would need the full extension. If we could.
Yes, I will provide that to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hasland. Okay.
Thank you all.
We're leaving that open. And we are now.
I'm sure I know. I think I think you said this already, but if people want to send in written comment, you could do that at any time. You don't have to wait for the meeting.
I wasn't really clear enough. I said, just make sure you get it in time for the next time we hear it. But I, you know what? We have their email addresses. We can reach out to them and tell them. Mr. Basili, we're able to open, we're about to open the public hearing. I just want to verify that we can hear you.
Yes, I'm here and ready.
Mr. Basili, and we're ready to go then. We are now opening the public hearing. And our first, our app, our, Mr. Cohen is is going to be representing the applicant. If you would unmute, Mr. Cohen. Okay, Mr. Cohen, if if you are in agreement, we would hear both the first, both of the items at the same time. That's the zoning map amendment as well as the preliminary coastal site plan and special permit. Are you in agreement with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, now seated on this application is a little different from everything else. It's Albin. Goss is seated for Mr. McCray. Lo.
For Levy.
For Levy, who it doesn't matter because you'd be seated anyway. Mr. Barilak and Mr. Yeski. So Albin, Goss, Lo, Barilak and Yeski, and that's for both of these applications. These are all, these are both must close as as of tonight. Because we have the maximum extension to close has been granted. You'll have to tell us what you wish to do with the zoning map amendment when you're ready, Mr. Cohen. And with that, if you would proceed.
Thank you, Ms. Alvin. Bruce Cohen, representing the applicant. As the chair pointed out, excuse me, there are two items before you tonight of necessity because of the requirements of the new regulation regarding MRC zones. The first item, of course, is to rezone the property at the end of Old Track Road owned by the applicant from GB to the GB MRC overlay zone as permitted by the regulation. In other words, to land the new zone on this particular property. And although there are a number of good reasons for approving that rezoning reasons that are really the standards of the new zone as well as P O C D. We are not seeking a decision on that item at this time. The reason it's before you is because the new zones is specifically section one fifteen D of the amended regulations requires that an application to rezone must be accompanied by a site plan special permit application. So in effect, they're married together. The commission really wants to see what the proposed development plan is going to be when it considers the rezoning. Just to address the process, which I know the commission was interested in from the briefing yesterday. What we're seeking tonight is really the first step in the site plan review process. Just as the applicant requested and was granted the new zoning amendment before it proceeded to to address in detail the site plan special permit issues, deferring those. The the first step of that is to seek what we're asking for tonight, which is some guidance from the commission regarding the design, the architecture of the project and a direction from the commission that we may proceed after hearing your comments to the A R C. And so for the, for purpose of, I guess, efficiency in in the process, because we know there are a number of issues to be addressed before the commission can consider a final application. We thought that the, again, the most economical and efficient way to proceed would be to receive your comments, receive comments from A R C and take it from there. And in the meantime, we're working on addressing open issues from DPW and from the preapplication comments that that we've heard. Specifically, a couple of those issues which were raised in the briefing yesterday were one issue raised by Mr. McCray was relating to soil testing. And of course, the the applicant intends to do extensive soil testing and whatever remediation is required by the by the DPW or by the any agency having jurisdiction over what we may uncover. As you know, there, there's going to be a significant excavation on the site, so that would presumably be handled in due course. The other issue that I heard raised yesterday had to do with traffic issues at the intersection of Old Track Road and Hamilton. And I think the commission may be looking for some recommendations that we may be able to offer regarding alleviating the traffic conditions that now exist and would continue to exist post-development. And again, we'll certainly be glad to work on that and we'll present that to the commission when we're ready to go to the next step on our site plan special permit application. But for tonight, what we would ask for in terms of the pending application, which we see have to be closed this evening would really be, I guess, one of two things. Either the commission, I think, is free to close these items and defer decision. We may or may not be able within the allotted time to come back with a final application, which case our intention would be to withdraw and and reapply with our final materials. Or the commission, I suppose, can ask that we withdraw tonight or deny the.
Just to get clear, just to get clear, Mr. Cohen, that's on the on the rezone. It would be would be that you would withdraw. On the preliminary, it seems advantageous to me that we close the preliminary and give you some kind of guidance to for the final, so that we should try to give you some guidance and not have, and if we close it, we give you guidance now on it. Is that what you're saying?
That would be perfectly acceptable, because sure.
On the on the rezone, it's really your call what is works best for you because what Katie and Pat pointed out to us yesterday is that you probably didn't want us to go ahead with the rezone because it would handicap you if the world changed.
That's correct. And and my assumption too is that the commission would like to deal with them both at the same time ultimately.
Okay, that's fair enough. Now, the second, the other question I wanted to ask Katie and Pat is a timeline for us, if we are that backed up right now, what happens? I know that yesterday people wanted to see the design and comment on it in the final before it goes to A R C. But what I'm wondering is if we, how soon we could accommodate that and how that fits your, the the client? How that, how that fits the applicant?
Ms. Alvin, we're prepared right now to make a presentation to you of of the design and get whatever comments we can get from you. You you've seen many of the elements in in the past, both at the preapp and in prior filings, but we would like your comments and we would like, in order to be able to move this along before all of our potential residents get much older to to go ahead with A R C. So if I may, I'd like to present Richard Rosen, who is a principal of Perkins Eastman, a colleague of Brad Eastman, who is traveling, couldn't be with us tonight. Rich will present to you our current thinking in terms of the design of the project and answer questions, both as to the architecture, the landscape architecture that we're planning, some of the issues that were raised in terms of neighborhood screening and that sort of thing. So if I may, I'd like to introduce Richard, whose face is before us.
Good evening.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Oh, something you're doing, you're controlling. I'm not used to somebody else controlling this slide.
He has the vertical and he has the horizontal.
Great. Yeah. Again, I'm Richard Rosen. I'm a principal with Perkins Eastman for the past sixteen years, and I work closely with Brad Perkins, who's unable to be with us tonight. So I'm happy to walk you through the project as it's been conceived up till now. And again, as Mr. Cohen has said, you've seen many of these images up till now, but more in the context of the zoning change. So why don't we just proceed? And then, you know, if you have any questions, just interrupt me or we can wait till the end, you know, whatever you would like. So again, an aerial view of the existing site. One old track road there. Sort of top-down view, as you can see, the railroad tracks to the, to the east and the, the other side of the, sort of the entry from the north on Old Track Road next to the car dealerships and lots. Here is a survey of the existing conditions.
Mr. Rosen, if I, if I might, I apologize, but could you just back up to that very helpful aerial slide, that one? Can you give us an idea how many of those, those trees to the, above the parking lot would disappear under your plan?
I, I'm going to defer, we have our landscape architect, Jeff Rush. From my understanding is that it's, it's not very many. But we're also planting over 40 trees in that area. So I'd, I'd rather defer that question to someone who can speak to it.
Fair enough.
In terms of the whole planting plan, sure. And here's, here's an overview of the site layout as well as a proposed planting plan. Entry to the north, as you can see on the far north, up against the property line, we have a driveway that's going to provide service to the building. The property actually starts just south of that, of that circle that you see, which is the, sort of the existing boundary of the property. And then we have an entry circle and drop off to the, to the main entrance. The south part of the site is mostly landscaped for both passive and active recreation. And again, I'll let Jeff Rush, our landscape architect, sort of describe the, the elements of the, of the planting plan and the landscape plan. But again, this, the, the general principle for senior residents, particularly assisted living, is to provide as much opportunity to be outdoors in a, in a, in a protective way to provide for walking, sitting and, and other activities, both individually and in a group. To the right, you can see between the, the first two wings, as you come into the site, there's a, an area, a green area down below between the wings. That's going to be a secure wandering garden for the memory care residents. So let's just go through the basic building plan. The way the, the way the site is configured and has been graded, we have a below grade parking level, which is two levels down. It's the level, there's, you can see where it says storage in the magenta, there's actually a ramp coming in over that, coming down. And then there's their parking spaces throughout with access to a central elevator for staff and other visitors to get to the main floor or to the other floors. Support spaces that have been designated storage and mechanical. I mean, as the building develops, those, some of those maybe turn into other utility spaces. Next. This is the terrace level and I, and I believe, I believe Ms. Gross, Ms. Goss yesterday sort of asked about this level on the north side and, and the east side, all the way up to fitness, there will be windows and that, that portion of the building is out of. As you can see on the right side of the building, coming down the driveway, there's a service bay, delivery bay for receiving materials and taking out trash and, and other materials right below the staircase. The entire back end of that, between the parking ramp are support spaces, back of house for various utility spaces, storage, laundry. The kitchen, the main kitchen is there with a service elevator in the kitchen. All along the east face and a little bit of the north, there's a, a large dining room for the, for the residents. There's social spaces, including art, an art studio, a hair salon, a fitness area, multipurpose room for lectures and other, and other activities, a theater or lectures or movies. And, and the mailroom, where a lot of residents prefer to check their mail on their way to. There are also some administrative offices in that area that support the function of the community. Let's go upstairs. The main floor, as you can see here, from the drop-off circle, you enter into the main lobby of the assisted living area. Enter in to an, an open welcoming living room. There's a game room, a bistro that will provide relaxation and, you know, coffee, tea, snacks all throughout the day and a small library space for reading. Purple areas are support administrative offices. On the far south, there are four assisted living residences on, on that side of the building. But on the right, you can see in the kind of reddish tone, there are 30 studios for memory care residents, along with dining and activity areas for them, all with access to the wandering garden that I described before. And that will be a gated garden, a landscape for passive recreation and other activities for the residents. Let's go upstairs. Now, next, this floor is similar for both floors two and three, all assisted living residences. The, the two colors don't signify anything other than to make it understandable as to where one unit starts and another one ends, to give you a sense of, of how the units are laid out. The building has been designed in an E shape for several reasons. Number one, functionally, it works well to sort of centralize elevators and sort of share walking distances from one end to the other for, for residents and staff. But also, the bulk of the building really is facing towards the railroad tracks and I-95. And we tried to create the smallest building mass possible that would be facing adjacent site and other residences. And then we would, and you'll see it when we get to the perspective views that, that we use the massing strategy to create what we feel is more domestically scaled elements of the building facing other existing buildings.
May I ask a question at this point?
Yes.
We asked this early on in the process, I just want to make sure that you're still on track. I, I see the design, I understand why you're facing the building, it makes all the sense, good design. The railroad is very close. Are there special building design features that help the occupant deal with the railroad and 95 too? But I'm thinking of the railroad itself. We had asked that question and it was said, yeah, we, we're going to work on that. Is there anything based, based on your experience that you folks do differently to a building that's this close to a railroad, a very active railroad?
Yeah, well, we also have projects that are in cities, you know, right on busy New York streets, so to speak.
A street, yes, but this is a railroad.
Right. So to answer your question, I mean, what we've learned over the years is that we, we insulate the walls carefully, but we also, in the choice and construction of the windows, these are double glazed and, and potentially because of energy use will be triple glazed. We've learned, you know, working with acoustical consultants, that if you vary the size of the glass, thickness of the glass, noise, you know, penetrates at different frequencies and will not be transmitted from one area of glass to another if the frequencies are different because of, of the glass.
The vibrations, how about the vibrations?
Similar, I mean, that, that controls that too. I, I've done that, I mean, I've been an architect for 42 years and when I was right out of school, we did a high-rise next to a major highway. And, and that's where I learned about this and that's a common approach to this.
So I think. My other part of that question I'd asked once before, do you anticipate any resistance to the marketing of the building, given how close it is to the railroad and 95, based on your other projects?
No, I don't think we do.
Okay, that's what they said the last time. You weren't here, so I thought I would ask and see if you contradicted yourself.
I hope I answered your question, sir.
Yes, you did.
So again, this, again, this is the second, all assisted living on second, third and, and fourth floors in, in a similar layout. And then the fourth floor, the building falls off to a, to a smaller fourth floor on this, on the southern portion of the building. We're very cognizant of energy usage and trying to make the most energy efficient building. I mean, we've discussed some of this before and I think and as the design progresses, we'll be able to give you a little bit more information about some of these ideas. But because we do have a, a roof that's going to be visible from the building and just having this much exposed roof, we're going to propose creating as much of a green roof as we can. The gray areas represent small screening elements that will wrap themselves around a small rooftop heating and cooling units that service all the units below. And on this floor also, there'll be an, an outdoor balcony. You see right in the center, there's a beige activity room and then that will be an open air balcony for the residents. And that's basically the organization of the building. And then the roof, again, when we get up to the, to the upper roof, we'll try and again, make that as green a roof as possible. And these are some of the views that, that you've seen before. I should mention that during the, you know, the very preliminary hearings, we were given feedback from one member of the, of the planning board that it would be desirable that we were proposing a four-story building, that we should create a dormer upper story to really give the impression of a three-story building. And so that has really guided, you know, our approach to massing and design for the building, really only expressing the four stories at those fingers that we talked about for the three wings, you know, right at the ends. But the majority of the roof on the fourth floor will be a dormer with a pop-up, will be a pitched roof with dormers, you know, for each of the, to provide windows for each of the rooms up there. And we varied the sizes and the shapes of those dormers to, to, you know, to work in scale with the roof line. Again, we're also proposing a variety of materials, a combination of stone and hardy plank cementitious siding, which you'll see on some of the other renderings. But again, trying to make it seem less like a singular building and more like a series of pavilions. This is a view from the southwest, looking back towards the drop-off and the port cochere to, towards the center of the building. You can see in this rendering that the balcony on the fourth floor that I just talked about, you know, is visible there in the center of the, of the, of the illustration. And as you can see, the roof on the fourth floor really is sort of the major form up there with a varied shape, both shed and pitch dormers, you know, to provide outdoor window exposure for the rooms and those on that floor. Again, another view, this is sort of as you approach the port cochere and that's that drop-off circle that we talked about. Again, lots of, there's also a connecting sidewalks, both from the entry to the site around to the entrance and all the way around to the back in that, in the, in the garden recreation area. And this is the view from the back, from the very south, looking back towards the, the angled wing of the building. And again, I'll let Jeff Rush, our landscape architect, talk about the nature of this and programming, but we'll have a water feature of very lush plantings, a lot of areas for strolling, sitting and, and a varied amount of planting. Again, we're proposing a significant amount of planting that will screen our, our site from the adjacent apartment buildings. But we think it's, we think it'll be a very pleasant place. And then finally, just preliminarily, and I think we would have more detail about this when coming to the architectural review committee, but the building is basically composed of, of several basic materials. The base and the towers at the corner of, of each wing would be a cultured stone. The roof would be architectural roof shingles that has some depth and profile to it. Windows would be a vinyl insulated window with vinyl trim and proposing for siding, hardy plank cementitious siding that looks like a traditional lap siding. We haven't decided on the final colors yet, but again, I think when we come back to you in the A R C, we'll, we'll talk about colors and we'll have real samples that we'll provide that we can discuss.
Can I ask a question here?
Oh, please.
Yep, you, you provided these renderings at different angles down around the building, but I don't, and I may have missed it, but do you have a rendering from the highway railroad side, if you will?
Uh, no, we don't have that at this, at this time.
And I, and I was going to wait to ask about that because I was wondering whether your landscape person would be providing some detail on what it looks like if you were staring out one of those windows and what you see other than railroad tracks and trucks on the highway.
Well, I know, I think we'll, we'll get back to the, you want to go to the next slide, please? Yeah, I mean, I think that there you know, between the properties and I think there's a 20-foot buffer and I think that's going to be landscaped. And again, I'll let Jeff, you know, refer to that, but that is going to be, that is going to be screened with, with planting.
Yeah, okay.
Anybody else? Mr. McRae? He's been very quiet, I hope he didn't lose his connection.
Not at all, I've been listening intently and I think actually understanding and looking at what you're presenting here, Mr. Rosen. It kind of jives with what we had in our package, I appreciate that. I would say when you're going to A R C, it would seem the devils are going to be in the details. You know, rake trim, all of those things. But the issues and actually hearing issues from Mr. Lo, what would residents see or experience if they faced the railroad and 95? I think actually understanding the relationship of the building to the rails, to the engine's ramp, to 95 in some sort of a section would be critical to, to have. Same in the opposite direction, the section from the building through the slope up to the condo units on the other side. It, it's, it's very difficult to kind of experience that in terms of the height of the building and its ratio to, you know, the first rail. Are you going to be high enough where you actually look down on the trains?
Well, we should, we, we have some sections for you here after these plans, I thought.
Okay, good.
If we talk about, we can go to those if you want, so we.
Just briefly, I think actually the other thing is I live on 95 in my front yard and the railroad in my backyard. What I find what I find with the railroad is the, not so much the commuter trains, which are actually swift and don't rumble, it's the various freight trains at two o'clock in the morning.
And the work and the repaired trains.
Yeah, I'll give you that too. So I think actually in thinking of your procedures and, and, and design solutions for those facing in that direction, maybe consider a different type of windmill beyond vinyl, something that has got a little bit more mass so it doesn't rattle as much. And understanding that the, the freight train itself is very slow, heavy and rumbles and shakes more than the commuter trains. So maybe something to keep in mind and factor in as you move along on things.
And with. Yeah, something more about low, low frequency.
Yeah, you can hear it coming half an hour away. Also, you have an entrance ramp, so you'll actually having vehicles accelerating to get on 95. And you're also at the far end of the waystation, entrance, exit. So you'll have the trucks coming out of that. So that noise compounded by the railroad, you really have a great deal of things to consider on that south-facing elevation.
Yeah, I, I, Mr. McRae, I think, I think that when we, you know, start to real dig into the design process, I think we're, we're going to retain an acquisition to probably take some readings out on the site to, you know, to deal with many of the issues that you're talking about. I mean, we've done that before, you know, in situations where we're, you know, in high traffic zones. So, so we understand that this, this really is an issue that has to be dealt with.
And to be fair, just to be transparent about this, in the back of our minds is the fact that adjacent to you is the J-lofts. And if you take a look at the railroad facing side of the J-lofts building, there are no windows there. The windows are all on the front, on the other side. I, I understand that that's not possible for you, given your configuration and your unit sizes. But so the last application that we got for. But so the last application that we got for multi-unit development in this area avoided having windows on the train station. So in our minds, somebody dismissed the noise. Somebody said this noise is difficult, but J Lofts has been there for a few years now. So maybe the technology for the windows is is improved. Okay.
Mr. Rosen, if you do, if you do the acoustic tests, just keep in mind that freight train comes around nine o'clock every other day, nine PM. And every other day. I, I think I have the schedule written down someplace. Once I run around and shut the windows to my house.
I have a feeling they're going to send me out there with a service of hot coffee and a microphone. I think that's what's going to happen.
I live down the street. I'll meet you there with the donuts.
Other, other comments from people.
If you're bringing donuts, that has to be a public meeting so I can attend.
Very good.
With, with the receipt for the donuts, I think, right?
So you were going to show us that height you had gone to that building height, you were on that slide and then we left it.
Yeah, I thought
Yeah, we had, it was one more ahead where you had the building height there.
Yeah, I mean, we can, you want to do this first and then come back to the landscape plan? We could, we could do it.
Yes, please, because I think this will give us a sense of the relationship of the slopes and all.
So go back to if you, if you could, could you go back one slide? So what we thought was that we would take an anticipation of of questions just like this. We thought we would take sections through the building at three different spots, at the three spots that are the closest to the neighbors. So, you know, section one is the furthest north, section two is in the middle and section three is through the southern wing. So we worked with Tony DeAndrea's office and they helped us with with spot grades, you know, at the entrances to each of the buildings, you know, at the top of the slope. And so that helped us construct these sections. So why don't we just go to the next one? So again, this is the building, you can see that building is at elevation ninety, ninety four, and our first floor is at elevation seventy two. And we thought that the distance between the buildings would be of interest to you. So we made sure that we included that. And I think again, Jeff Rush, our landscape architect, will speak to the, to the plantings on the slope. So again, this is to illustrate, you know, not only the distance, but sort of the relative elevations and heights of, of the adjacent buildings, many of which will be looking either, you know, if, if they can see even the top of our building, the others may actually look over our building if they can see it, you know, through the screening. So that's, that's the first section, the northernmost. Let's go to the second one. In the middle, again, now this, this, this group of buildings is even higher. It's about another ten or twelve feet at a hundred elevation hundred and four. Again, a little, maybe a little bit closer, about a hundred and twelve feet. And then if we go to the third section, this is up at a hundred and thirty feet and the, the first floor of this building is, is these ten or twelve feet higher than our roof. So hopefully with the proper screening, you know, that this, you know, what, what the residents from those buildings will see will not really affect them very much. So
Mr. Rosen, if I may suggest, we go back to the last slide, please?
Yeah.
If Mr. DeAndrea has an opportunity to possibly locate the first rail of the railroad in relationship to the property line that you're showing.
Sure.
That would be, that would be beneficial, just to understand the relationship between the building and that. It, it's, it's that understanding of, I, I guess Mr. Gasky was talking about, what do they see, what do they experience?
Do you think it would be helpful? I think it might be helpful to extend it all the way out and show the highway, even the
I, that I would, that would be great if you can do that.
Yeah, that I'm not going to go at at nine o'clock at measure myself, but we'll, we'll see if we can do it through GIS. But I think we can add that to the section. I think that would sort of tell the whole story. Great. I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Jeff Rush, landscape architect, who can talk a little bit about his, his approach to the site and the, and the planting. And then I guess we're open for questions.
We missed that part of the instruction, so we're, we've been asking anyway.
Good evening. I'm Jeffrey Rush from RGR Landscape. We're the landscape architects for the project. We're also an affiliate of Perkins Eastman, which we have been for almost twenty years. So we've worked with them on many projects like this. And this is an illustrative landscape plan, the sheet that you, we've been back and forth over is an actual planting plan, but this is more illustrative to show the colors and where the the evergreens are and shade trees and flowering trees. So I'd like to start with, because there was a question about the western edge. And you can see up at the top there, which is the western property line. And we've already seen sections through the building, so you can see that relationship. But up, up where the number twelve is, that's, those are trees that are basically from the aerial photo, a tree line that's off the property, but just below those trees, you can see the line where the property line is. And there was a question about on the property, how many trees are there and how many would remain? From the survey, along that edge, there are, on the slopes along that edge, are fourteen existing mature trees. There's one that's a dead tree, but there are fourteen that are living trees. Because of the construction of the new entry road, four trees will actually be removed, four of the fourteen. So ten of the existing mature trees will remain on those slopes. And as you can see from this plan, in addition to that, we're intending to plant another forty trees. So there'd be a total of fifty one trees along those slopes. Of the forty we're tending to plant, I think sixteen of them are shade trees and the rest are flowering trees, but they're all, you can see them along the edge sort of bordering on the garden, the courtyard garden at the south end. So those are the numbers. We were also talking about the eastern edge. And along that edge, there is a twenty foot planted buffer that's actually off the property line. So I think you can see the the two lines there that indicate that buffer. And in, in that that zone off of the property, there are also actually, I think, fourteen existing mature trees. And here you can see which ones they are in that twenty foot wide easement, the lighter color sort of yellow green trees, those are the existing deciduous trees. So in addition to that, we're proposing to plant basically an evergreen screen. And you can see those in the darker sort of blue green color. I think forty three evergreens and they would be mixed white pines and arboridie and some Norway street spruce. So they would be planted in that easement all the way along there at approximately twelve to fifteen feet on center, all the way along there. But when you go onto the property line, so it's just a little bit up from that buffer in this drawing, we're actually planting another I don't know, thirty eight or so trees along that edge on the property line. So they those would be shade trees and flowering trees. So it'd be like a, a second layer of planting, of deciduous planting between the garden at the south end and between the building and the buffer at the, at the north end of the site. And in the garden itself, you can see where the number three is at the south end of the building is a big semi circular patio. And from that, we're proposing a sort of a loop walkway that goes all the way down along the western edge to the southern end and then loops back up and has a couple of places where you can cross over. But basically, we're trying to create a whole series of outdoor environments, different kinds of outdoor environments. So if you in the upper right of the garden, you see the number five there. That's a, a small sitting area that would have a water feature sort of set into that slope that's over there. And then there's a walkway that continues to the south and along those slopes will be dogwoods and red buds, a number of different kinds of flowering trees. And then you can see in the center is the big circular, more formal plaza with the fountain. And that's the one that you saw in the rendered image that we showed. So that image was slightly to the left of, of that or to the south of that plaza, looking up toward the building. And then the walkway continues down and at the, at the southern end before it narrows too much is where the number five is, is another a sitting area with another sort of small natural water feature there. And below that, in the triangular space in the south, since it does get so narrow, we're just planting a small orchard of crab apple trees. And then the walkway continues along the eastern edge and comes back up. And that side will be treated partly because of the buffer that's there and the other trees along that edge. This is going to be a more natural walkway. So where the number seven is would be a sensory garden, where number eight is would be a butterfly garden. And where number nine is would be just native plants along there. And this drawing shows the trees, the flowering trees, the evergreen trees and shade trees. But there will be all sorts of smaller understory plant material, shrubs, native grasses, perennials and those sorts of things. And then number four is a putting green. Now, which from the patio will just be an open lawn area. But it will actually be there for putting. So that, that is it. Around the entrance where you see the circular drop off into port cochere, those would simply be ornamental trees, mostly lawn, but with flowering trees and a few shade trees you see there. And then Rich mentioned where the number one is, is an enclosed garden that would be, it's enclosed. It's open to the sky, but it's enclosed and it's up on a roof, but it's a wandering garden with just a paved terrace and you know, because it's on structure, those trees will be in planters, large planters.
I'll just add one thing that at the number three, what we didn't really dwell on much in the, is that corner of the building is cut and it, it's next to the bistro and that's actually between the second floor and the first floor, that's going to act like a covered porch, which then opens to that semi circular area that Jeff has shown in number three. So it allows residents to, you know, grab a cup of coffee or some tea or or some juice or whatever, sit outside, you know, in a sheltered porch and then go out into the garden. So it's all coordinated to work together. Did you want to look at your planting plan at all, Jeff, to illustrate?
Well, if you, if you go to that plan, it's hard to read it because it's a just black and white drawing, but you can sort of see the, the contours along that western edge and where all those plant, new trees will be in relation to those contours. Those are the slopes we've been talking about.
I mean, one, one thing about, you know, when you're doing a senior community is that all sidewalks really can't exceed five percent grade so that, you know, anyone of any physical ability, you know, is able to walk and it's not too steep. So I think in addition to dealing with the, the complicated grading of the site, you know, Jeff has really worked out, you know, a nice outdoor area that's going to be, you know, walkable, whether you're in, in a walker, whether you have a cane or whether someone is pushing a wheelchair. And I think, I think other than if you continue, you know, we just go back through the site sections if you can continue forward. And I think that's
Mr. Rush, did you have a chance to look at our conservation department's comments?
Yes.
And would you respond to that? I, I know we're gonna, I know we're gonna address the single line of evergreen trees. I know we're addressing the train noise. I'm sure you won't have encroachments when you're done, you're, I, I'm sure you can ensure that you go back and work with the soil so that they're not compacted where you're planting. She has a comment though about the most environmentally valuable portion of the property. And the issue is that what she then recommends is that you reduce the building and you you scale down the building and you change the access driveway, but from what we've heard in the past from you, you need this building scale to be viable and you are purposely designing the driveway the way it is. Is there any way that you could preserve more of this natural area?
Can we go back to the, the planting plan, the black and white drawing?
The other way there.
Right there. So you see where all the lines are up at the, along the upper edge, the western property line. Those are the slopes we're talking about. And you can see the how the, the new entry drive comes along those slopes.
Yep. Yes.
And
I don't see how you could pull it in. I, I, I see the point. Go ahead.
And what is happening there actually is that that, that's being filled. No, we're not cutting into the slopes. Area, those contours are being filled to allow the, the entry drive to climb up to the finished floor elevation. But other, other than that, where those two things are, all the slopes, all those contours that you see are, are not going to be touched at all, except for the new plantings going to go on them. So that's, so there are fourteen trees that exist in that sloped land. Only four of them are actually going to be affected by this filling. So I understand the point, but it's, we're not excavating these slopes. We're not, for the most part, taking out excavating or taking out any trees along there. And in fact, we're adding additional shade trees and trees, most of those perhaps over there, actually all of them will be native trees. So that would be the response.
Okay. Mr. Rosen and, and, and also Mr. Rush, the conservation comments were also that she couldn't access the property. It would be helpful, and I'll remind Mr. Cohen, if, if you all would let her access the property and walk it, because she reached some conclusions that perhaps she would not, and you never know.
We'll, we'll fix that.
Any other questions from the commission?
Yeah, I you know, we're aware your firm has a lot of capabilities in terms of building green buildings. And I just wonder if you were farther along in terms of energy efficiency. I mean, you've already mentioned several things you're doing, green roof, which is great, double glazed windows and strong insulation, but are, are there other things that you're thinking about that you can mention or is it, is it too premature?
I, I think that, I think it's probably premature, but I think what you're seeing in the roof plan are those, the little rectangles that you see inside the big rectangles. I think we're, I think we're probably going to look at an all electric building, which I think is the direction that the world is going in. And we're doing that in a couple, you know, in a couple of projects already of a similar type. And I think that we, we've more, more recently been looking as opposed to, you know, heating and cooling with a huge cooling tower on the roof. We're looking at a VRF heating and cooling system. So each of those little boxes that you see will provide, you know, will provide heating and cooling to between eight and ten different units. And they're much more energy efficient. And, you know, we've used them, you know, as far north as Rochester and Buffalo, you know, so they can handle extremes and temperature and, and they're proving to be they're looked on well by NYSERDA in terms of energy usage and they would be part of an overall energy plan. But beyond that, I mean, once we start to develop wall sections, it all works hand in hand. I think the kind of you know, the kind of windows that we would use, the amount of air infiltration we would allow, air exchanges, things like that. You know, how we deal with makeup air, you know, we're going to need to get an engineer on. I'm, I'm not an engineer and you know, if, if you listen to my colleague Ryan Dirks the other day at the EMAC hearing, we have a lot of resources who as a standard procedure, when we begin a building now, we have an energy summit, so to speak, before we even start to design, you know, the construction type of the building and we discuss systems and that really starts to guide the design effort. But I think that's the, the VRF system and sort of understanding, you know, what we have to do. In addition to meeting current energy codes, which have gotten much more stringent, you know, even as a baseline, which gets you way towards, you know, the standards and energy efficiency. So I think it's getting to be so that it's not a question of how will you be energy efficient, like how far can you push it to be energy efficient? I think we just don't have a choice. And I know that in the fifteen years that I've been at Perkins Eastman, we've gone In the fifteen years that I've been at Perkins East, when we've gone. From a few energy efficient buildings to I'd say, you know, over ninety percent of our new projects are, are meeting that. And we have a twenty thirty. You know, goal of zero energy consumption that, that we're, we're pushing to meeting. So it forms everything that we're doing.
Well, it'd be wonderful. I mean, you'd be a leader in the town if you did an all electric. Building. I mean, I think number of people on the planning staff would do handstands if you were able to do it. Because I think you'd be the first in the town.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at another project in, in the Albany area, you know, with similar, you know, similar population. Similar construction type and, and we're looking at that also. So it's. You know, it, it's something, the time has come really to start to consider that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mr. Rosen, if you, the building is all electric. I know that you're contemplating having a generator in the front yard. Understanding that the building would be all electric, I guess that unit would be of a significant size. Maybe something to keep in the back of your mind, maybe possibly taking it out of the front yard. Or the approach to the building and put it someplace. In the back, in the probably the lower west, east corner, southeast corner. Near the service bays, that kind of thing. If, if the building is going to have to, you know, run a hundred percent in a power outage. I would think that actually that generator is going to be significant. And I think it's, you know, just, just from pure aesthetics, if it's in the backyard as opposed to the first thing you see driving up.
That'd be great. I hear you. I hear you. All right. Well, we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at that.
I, I think though, if it's a truly very efficient building, the amount that you have, the. Amount of temperature that you have to work from. Is less than you would with a less efficient building. So the more efficient the building is, you know, the less energy you have to use to. To heat it, at least that's what, you know, we hear from Brian Dirks and some of your people.
Right, right. And I think, I mean, the, the emergency generator is more, you know, yes, it has to do the climate control, but it also has to provide. Power, you know, for life safety issues also, you know, to every unit and, you know, if people have any devices. That they need or, you know, refrigeration for, for food and other things. So, you know, we'll assess that. And, you know, typically when we size the generator, you know, to meet the state requirements and also sort of operational. Pieces. I don't know if Mr. Sharma, our client is here, but I'm.
Before, before, I just wanted to ask the commission, just for a second. Do you all have any more questions right now or could I turn it to a public comment? Cause we've got a couple of hands up?
Public comment.
Okay. And I'd like, I, I see. I see we have, actually there is the chair of the. Ms. Bonaventura. Is the chair of the Energy Management Advisory Committee subteam. That's working with planning and zoning right now to write. Energy efficiency regulations. And to which Mr. Wells referred. Ms. Bonaventura, if you would go ahead and give us your comments.
Greetings, Madam Chair. In fact, I have been patiently waiting through the meeting and learning a lot for the need point. Property that comes up next. And if I'm only allowed to speak once, I would prefer to.
No, no ma'am, you're only allowed to speak once per application, especially when we get really tired, but it's per application. You're not limited. You're not limited for the night.
Then I will simply state, in fact, and I'll introduce myself when I talk about the meed property, but. There is an all electric commercial building in Greenwich already. It's the Greenwich Country Day Schools Upper Elementary Building. It's forty two thousand square feet of electric only. That's a nearly net zero energy with very small generators. So. I applaud the work that. That Mr. Rosen and team are doing to try to create an energy efficiency marquee public. Public-ish building. And from an energy perspective, it sounds terrific. So I'll hold my comments for meed.
Oh, yes. Yeah. So that's it on this application. In addition, I, I think we made that clear before if. If the applicant wishes to speak with the EMAC team directly. The planning and zoning commissioners would have to recuse from that meeting, but if you want to work with EMAC directly and get input from them. Just Katie can provide you with Ms. Bonaventura's email address. So you can contact her. I believe Mr. Cohen and Ms. Cronin and, and Michelle Cronin have it anyway. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is. Ira Lutske. Mr. Lutske, I know you also have been waiting patiently. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am the president of, excuse me, of the Viewstone Condos. On Spring Street where the association actually, our buildings look directly down on the property. Or possibly across to the property. And what I've talked about at prior meetings is the screening on, I believe. The, the Spring Street side, which I believe is the western side. And what I see there now. Is just the nat, the trees that are, what I see on the landscaping plan, and I may have missed something. Are just the trees that. There at this time, I did not see any additional plantings. And my concern is the trees that we do have on bordering on Spring Street are only. Provide any sort of shade or screening during the spring and summer. So for half the year, we're looking right down onto that property. And that was a concern of mine. Now. Mr. Rosen had some slides, but I couldn't quite. Make it out, the. What is the elevation of the, and I may not be asking you this question the right way, but the, the height of the roof line. Of the property. And is there anything that compares it? And I saw something, but I couldn't quite make it out that compares it to our condos on Spring Street because.
Mr. Lutske, you do know that you can go into, into our agenda and click. On it and see all the plans and everything that's been submitted, right?
I did and I, what I, I guess I did not go to the right place, but what I saw was the. The letter from Mr. Rosen of written December seventh, no, the, the, I'm sorry.
All the plans are there, but that's okay.
Okay, I'll, I'll go back and look at that.
They'll send you the link. Okay, go ahead.
All right. So my concern is that we actually are, our bedroom windows are going to be below. The buildings and we only have somewhere between forty and sixty feet from our. Property line to. To the, a new project. And we are very much in favor of the new project. Our issue is with the amount of screening. And the existing trees do not provide any screening. At all during the, you know, fall and winter months. So Mr., I had raised this issue with Mr. Sharma and he was very. Accommodating. And he has offered this full assurance to screen our lot line to the condo satisfaction. And he further stated that he has no problem if this was made a condition of approval when they seek.
Final.
Like some final approval. And at this stage, what I'm really wanting to accomplish is. I, I don't know how to proceed to formalize this within the planning and zoning, you know, procedure.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna summarize all of our comments. And we're gonna do what we call, at some point, we will make a decision on the preliminary application. That would include this comment of yours. We would, we also are going to ask the, we expect the architectural review committee. To ensure that there is no lighting on the site that would be intrusive to the neighbors and they, they know that. Mr. Cohen is, is an expert and knows exactly what he, he needs to do to satisfy that. So. But those are the two things to give you the screening that you've, that you've requested and that Mr. Sharma has offered you. We would ask for that, that you be given sufficient screening and also. That there be no intrusion from any of the lights.
Okay, thank you, Madam.
You may also find, I'm thinking that you may find. That you'll have some noise abatement with the construction of this site. There's a chance because there's now something that'll block some of the sound waves coming your way. I just, I'm never good at. The physics of how, what deflects them. Okay, is that it, Mr. Lutske?
Yes, that is it. And I thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we'll see you when they come back, I guess.
Okay, yes.
And, and Patrick or Katie will send you the agenda and on the agenda, you just go to the item. So you would go to the public hearing, just scroll down to the public hearing and it's, it says, go down to item six. And on item six, you click on the, all the materials they submitted and the staff report. Thank you, sir.
And I would see Mr. Rosen's slide on, on, in that section as well.
I believe they're all in there. I remember seeing the plans in there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If not, they're in the record and you can just ask for them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, bye. Okay, anybody else in the public wish to speak on this application? No. Okay, commissioners, do you have any further comments or questions?
No.
All right, so where we left this is. Mr. Cohen. You might just withdraw the zoning map amendment? Or do you want us to go ahead and close it since it's a must close for us?
We'll probably end up ultimately withdrawing it. But right now, if you would just close it, I'd appreciate.
Okey doke. And, and we will close the site plan and special permit. And I hope everybody made notes. Of what you would want to see if we were to move this to final and what guidance you wish to provide to the applicant.
I know that Michelle has been taking very careful note of all of the comments, which is exactly why we're before you tonight. And our hope is to, that proceed with ARC and start assembling their comments.
I'll tell you what, my notes only have one thing that we did not discuss. Even though we don't anticipate. A lot of your residents will drive. What my experience of assisted living facilities is Mother's Day. Is packed to the gills. And what I was just going to ask you if somewhere in your final site plan, when you're doing the traffic and. And all of that, that you have a consideration for how you would handle overflow parking. On what my mom used to call the high holy days, but Mother's Day, Mother's Day being one of those, okay?
It was holy to her, I'm sure.
It was holy to her. So just that you have a plan. That, how that would be handled, because every time I've seen one on those key days. Mother's Day is especially jam packed. All you really have to do is have a plan for the overflow. You know, just have a look into it.
Of Mother's Day from scars. And we, we will focus on that and thank you for the comment.
The. We're going to give you some, Mr. McRae, since you are not going to be seated on this. Once we close, you will not be able to participate in the discussion. Would you like to make any comments now? Just general feedback for the applicant? Is that okay, Katie, if we do it like that?
I think, I mean, he's not obviously going into, into decision mode by any stretch. I mean, I think it's a part of the.
No, I think for me, I, in, in talking to Mr. Rosen, I think he may understand what I'm really kind of getting at is to really get a. A sense of. The relationship of the building to the offsite elements. Getting a really good sense for ARC, for the detail of the building, the materials, the trim, et cetera. I think. For Mr. Rush. Or Mr. Rush. Separating out and actually possibly including, because it seemed to me that a lot of commissioners may. Need to really understand is what is the. Status of the vegetation, the trees on the slope. And things that are being removed, things are being, are being stayed, kept. I know Mr. Diadria's office. Has a tree removal plan and maybe they incorporate that into your landscape plan. As well, so they can see the before and after issues. And separate the lighting plan from the landscape plan. I noticed you have sixteen foot poles in various locations, that kind of stuff. And I know you're going to want really nice lighting for the walking areas in the back, but. You want to make sure you're not overlit, but then again, providing enough light for everybody to wander around in the summertime in the backyard there.
Yep. Okay. All right. Okay. So does anybody object to closing these applications at this time? Please raise your hand. Alrighty, we will therefore close these applications. Thank you very much, all who participated. And we will. See you. Later. Do you guys, yeah, we've got time. Can we do one more? Let's do Meat Point LLC.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Meat Point LLC for a final coastal site plan and special permit at Zero Indian Field Road. Which is going to have a different address and we'll leave that. That way, Mr. Hegney is ready to present, I believe. If you would go ahead, Mr. Hegney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, members of the commission. For the record, Tom Hegney on behalf of the applicant. This is one of two lots at the end of Indian Field Road. This is parcel A. It's an eight acre parcel, according to the tax assessor. But when we eliminate the area between. The lot shape and Indian Field Road and we eliminate. That portion which is not contiguous and greater than seventy feet wide. We end up with a lot that is for zoning purposes. Four point eight, four point oh eight three acres. What this does is it limits the floor area to sixteen thousand seven square feet. And we're proposing a house of fifteen thousand one hundred and sixty one square feet. That calculation has been reviewed and approved by the zoning enforcement officer. I know there was discussion.
Yes, there was confusion. It, because it was confusion.
That there are two separate lots here. This is for zoning purposes, a four acre lot. And so we have designed the house to comply with the four area ratio for that four acre. Zoning area. We received the engineering comments. And are in the process of setting up a meeting with the town engineer to review those. There was one issue that they have cited and that's they are asking for easements between the two lots for. Purposes of ingress and egress, utilities and drainage. Both these lots are owned by the same entity. So in essence, we would be giving an easement to ourselves. Which we don't need.
But if you don't, but Mr. Hegney, if you don't. Wouldn't you be de facto remerging in the lots?
No.
Because you're now saying that, well.
The, these are two lots on an approved and recorded subdivision map. Having a, a common driveway, which we're required to have anyway, because we have. Two rear lots coming off of Indian Field Road. So the driveway has to be shared between the lots. And the utilities are going to come down through that, those accessways. So that, that doesn't change the fact that these are two legal. Valid lots that would not merge just because we have. A common driveway or common utilities.
But there, even though it's the same owner, the, the naming of said lots is different, right? Or the, or the lots named the same?
No, they're the same. They're, they're, they're in the same entity.
Does the subdivision map have, make note of the. You know, sometimes it says things on the subdivision map about the common driveway or. Utilities and that kind of thing. Is that noted on the map?
You know, Katie, I'm not sure.
Yeah, so she's asking, she's, and so what if you sell it in ten minutes and then you haven't noted any of that on the maps?
That anyone who is buying the other lot or the swim for that matter. Is going to want to make sure that they can drive over the other person's accessway. To gain access to their lot. Because the driveway will be straddling those, those two accessways. And we'll want to make sure they have right to maintain the drainage and the utilities.
Okay.
So I.
Is there language in the, in the. Is there a deed for each of those properties?
Yes, but. Yes, but let me provide you with that information, Katie.
Yeah, so that, do you remember the old history of this? This is, you're going to remember this, Katie. It was originally when Maitland was chair and it was called Il Mandorlo. And the commission denied the subdivision four to one.
Yeah, I remember, I know exactly which property it is, but I just wondering.
Making sure.
Yeah, what, what, what documentation there is.
Okay.
I'll, I'll provide that. We're obviously not closing this tonight. I just really want to go over with you what we have as issues that we want to be able to address and see if there are any others that you have, that we think, you think we need to be, be dealing with.
Go ahead.
As I said, we're setting up a meeting to review the drainage design with engineering. But I, I think, given what we have here, it's, there is no need for the, the easements. But I'll, I'll review that with, when we meet with the town engineer as well. The property is currently partially developed. It has a road that goes through it. It has two bridges. It has the two man-made tidal ponds. And it has a, a dock. So the, there's a fair amount of development that has already occurred here. The house that's being proposed is located in the X zone. I know there was some discussion about what would happen with flooding and storms in terms of impact to the garage and basement. The garage and basement are at elevation 14, which is the surrounding AE zone. And so the driveway into the garage actually slopes up from the, the existing roadbed into the garage. So we don't see the issue of the basement flooding, since it's at elevation 14, even though it's in the X zone and wouldn't have to meet any, any flood elevation, frankly, at all. Last thing I wanted to go over was the conservation comments. They're looking for us to prepare a construction phasing plan, address some issues during construction. Looking to see if we can relocate the geothermal wells that are proposed as, as part of this development. And we're looking to also set up a meeting with them and discuss these comments with them and provide the additional information requested.
When you talk to conservation, the other thing is there was disagreement, or a differing opinion, shall we say, between the, what, the narrative for the landscape plan that Mary Cavazos from Finley, from Mark Finley wrote, and how conservation saw the trees. The intent of the designer is to transform the overstory plant community into a more, into understory and shrubland. But conservation's point is that the overstory came naturally and belongs there and that those large trees should be kept. And there is pretty significant tree removal. You have, you're removing 175 trees. And you are planting 153, but it's not clear to me because of the way this narrative is phrased, whether these are going to be overstories. So you're losing canopy and that's the issue for conservation. So if you would work that out while you're addressing these DPW comments, that would be helpful.
Certainly, we'll, we'll, we'll address that with them. And what the report also indicates is there are hundreds of trees that we're retaining also.
Yes, you have, you, there are a total of 617 trees on the site and you are removing 175. But we are trying hard to maintain the vegetation and to, you know, that it's our goal to maintain canopy covered and that we're still working on regulations to do that. So again, right now, we're just asking for good faith efforts, but if you would work with conservation. Mr. McRae, did you want to respond? I know you're the one who raised the flood and garage question yesterday. Are you satisfied?
Yeah, it's, it's an interesting thing, because they, the road out in front is at about eight. The rise is to 10, as Mr. Hegney had talked about, and then it goes down into 14. I think it's the, it was more of curiosity of how that was going to work. It seems that, you know, in my opinion, bad storm, heavy tide, you know, we're going to get water into the basement. But then that's basically the property owner's issue. You know, yeah, I guess there's nothing to pump it out. Doesn't really matter. They'll just have to live with that. But I think understanding now, it goes from eight to 10 and then down is the object of keeping the water out. And I would, I would suspect they're going to do an awful lot of work to make sure actually there's a lot of drainage around this foundation, so the water doesn't seep into that, into the voids there, so. Mr. Hegney, with the, the driveways themselves, there's no intent to actually improve them or raise them above the floodplain elevations at all?
Not, not, not the ones that run along the shoreline. No.
Right, okay.
They would just rise up, because you're looking at a, what, what we're looking to do is work with the topography of the site. So actually, it goes from eight along the shoreline to 10 and then increases to 14. So the, the garage level is actually elevation 14. And then we're looking to have the first floor at roughly 25, 26. So we, we, we think that the, the drainage can be handled. And think of one particular house in Bellhaven, where I think the garage, which is larger than this, is actually below the, the flood elevation. So it is in a flood zone.
I think that's actually also.
It can be worked.
Right.
That particular garage, I think, is waterproofed.
Yes, it's waterproofed and it has several sun pumps. Know-it-well. We all remember it. It's one of those memorable ones. Okay. Anybody else, anybody else have comments or questions on this application? I'm not. Mr. Wells.
Thanks. On the survey, will you mention, Mr. Hegney, that there were two man-made tidal ponds? Could you point them out? Are they, are they described as the, the tidal lakes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, you can see, there's one sort of on the northern side. It's relatively small and has rock. I don't know whether, they're, they're interesting rocks placed within it. I don't know if that's sort of a sculpture or what it is. And then you have the much larger one, and they're both tidal.
But you're saying they're, they're man-made, so somebody like, I guess, knocked a hole in the causeway to let the water in?
Well, yeah, well, that's, that's where one of the bridges is, yes.
Yeah. Then on the causeway, so it's eight feet up. You know, we're seeing high tides, seven and eight feet. Expected, you know, another foot and a half of water rise up to 2050. But you say there's no plans to increase the height of the causeway or put in some sort of seawall or something to protect the road?
Here we have the land. Slide two shows the, the tidal ponds.
Yep. You got it. Yeah, I'm looking the same one. Thank you.
Yeah, that's.
You're working, it's, it's, that's deep jurisdiction, right? The, the accessway, and I know you've already worked on it and then you've got to go back, right?
Oh, actually, no, we, we received no comment from DEP on it.
Did they realize you had, yeah, well, Pat fixed it for you, so you could work on it and you're all done?
Oh, I'm, oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I was talking about the overall site plan.
No, the accessway.
We are going to review the accessway where it collapsed due to, what, doesn't appear to be one storm, but a series of storms.
That's what we were wondering yesterday. It had to have been cumulative, because it shouldn't have been significant enough that last. It was a storm, but not significant enough to give you the damage you had.
Yeah.
And so you're going to review that and then you'll go to deep at some point. And we'll just eventually note that you're going to get the approvals from deep to work on that accessway. When you consider doing a staging plan, wouldn't that be your first step? To make sure your accessway can unimpeded handle the trucks?
Oh, very much so, yes.
Okay, so you're going to go first to deep anyway and get your approvals to, to improve that accessway?
Yes, we're going to be doing that.
Okay.
I, I would add, include this in the category of what we had for 187 Shore Road, that this would be something that would need to be resolved prior to any zoning or building.
Yeah, because you're not going to, if you've got any risk to be able to getting on that site in a storm or getting people off. Okay. Alrighty, I'm going to turn to public comment. If the commission doesn't have any more questions, anybody else going once? No. Ms. Bonaventura, welcome back.
Thank you so much. If I may, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'd like to give a very brief introduction, mention a few items in terms of context in the state right now and focus on both energy and environment issues. I'm the former Director of Sustainability for the Greenwich Country Day School, hence my knowledge about that net zero energy building. And I currently chair the Board of Selectmen's Energy Management Advisory Committee for Phase One and chair a subgroup focused on energy aspects in development regulations with some of the folks here. I am also on the Conservation Commission as an alternate. So I really bring both the energy and the environment perspective to these projects. In terms of context, I think it's important for the committee to bear in mind that these proposals are brought at a point in time when much is changing and may not yet have settled, but nonetheless, we can see it coming towards us. You all are aware that the Public Act 2129 recently passed, empowering planning and zoning boards to both mandate or incentivize energy efficiency measures and renewable power uses. Following that came the governor's executive order with the same overall objective. So it's very clear that more aggressive energy efficiency and renewable power use expectations in various forms should be anticipated by the committee. And there's no reason why the committee could not take that into account now, even in the absence of formal regulations. The second point I'd like to bring is around in the environmental context. There is in Connecticut legislation, statements regarding a 20-inch sea level rise by 2050 and the expectation that even a 10% storm would cut off all access to a property such as this. I, if I turn now, if you will, to the ecological points I'd like to make about this proposal, I can in no way overstate the ecological importance of this parcel. I will respectfully take issue with Mr. Hagerty's characterization of the, of the, of the parcel having, quote, "a fair amount of development," unquote. I've had the privilege of taking a kayak there repeatedly and know it very well. And if I were a poet, I could describe it to you. And it's really rich, diverse, pristine beauty. It is what Greenwich Point would be had it been left undisturbed. And in this parcel, this eight-acre portion, is a diversity of coastal habitats that's almost unseen along the Greenwich coast. There are coastal forests, coastal grasslands, intertidal flats, submerged aquatic vegetation beds, shelfage reefs, tidal wetlands, and so forth, all of which are enumerated in the Conservation Commission's report. So with that ecological significance, I urge the commission to do their utmost to ensure the property owner meets at a minimum and ideally exceeds expectations. In terms of trees, for example, it isn't the tree count that matters so much. It's the diameter and biomass of the trees. The proposal removes every single tree of greater than 10 inches in diameter and replaces them with, as the, the, the chair pointed out, much smaller diameter and lower lying plant plantings. So it is not a one-for-one relationship. Secondly, the, the, the proposal, the, the condition of the roadway, having been recently damaged by IDA, is a wonderful example of what could be anticipated in terms of future stormwater pollution and runoff in what is already acknowledged to be a flood hazard zone. So I don't know if folks are aware, but on asphalt surfaces are heavy metals from cadmium, lithium, lead, that any vehicle from the tailpipe leaves in the road behind. And stormwater runoff is assured in this site. And even stated as so, both the water and the soil on both sides of it. So the, the risk of that stormwater pollution immediately into what is essentially recreational water is significant. Lastly, on the ecological point, the pool spa mechanicals have been identified by the commission, Conservation Commissioner, as encroaching in their current placement. So again, my overall point is that, given the ecological vitality and importance of this site, preserving as much of that as possible would behoove our, us and future generations. So holding to a movement of those elements, so that they don't encroach, is another one of my suggestions. If I may now turn, please, to the energy profile of this project. It goes without saying that the load demands of a project of this scale will be very considerable. It is not, it is twice the size of the threshold level for special permitting requirements. And so one can anticipate fuel and energy demands of considerable size. Now, even with a geothermal system, given its location, it needs to anticipate significant outages. And there must be a generator solution. I didn't see it in any of the publicly available materials. And wonder if the commission could inquire into the fuel source of the generator, whether it's electric gas or diesel. If it is diesel and it's located on a point with significant storms and stormwater pollution risks, perhaps there could be a better choice made. I'll also add that noise carries over water. And what is now the sound of birds and water lapping against an empty beach will become the, the rattling of a generator that will carry literally for miles, unless that is specked out accordingly. Again, regarding the high likelihood of power loss and the, the heavy load demands, it puts even additional importance and pressure on the energy efficiency profile of the structure. And that's where I felt the materials available to the public were woefully silent. As the previous applicant indicated, Mr. Rosen, there are builders in our community skilled and knowledgeable at creating such energy-efficient structures that they can go all-electric and require very small backup generation capacity. I urge you to request from the applicant an energy modeling report and to hold them to the governor's and the Public Act 2129's stated ambitions of superior energy efficiency. If I may just scan down my little scribbly notes here and see if there's a point that I might have missed. Nothing is jumping out. So I appreciate it.
And you'll also have an opportunity, if you can make the time, that this applicant will be returning. And you can subscribe to our agendas. And you, you, you'll know when they're back on. And if you want to add comments on their environmental achievements or lack thereof, you may add then.
Thank you for that invitation. In, in its current state, it is an ecological treasure. And anything short of that is a loss to the town. I appreciate that a private owner has, was well within their rights to do that. But I urge us to protect what we can.
Thank you very much for making the time.
Thank you. Goodbye.
Bye. Okay, Mr. Hegney, toll order for you.
We will take all of this under advisement.
Yes, but you know, she's making an excellent. Yes, but you know, she's making an excellent point. If you, I'm sure you've read through the governor's EO Executive Order, uh, number twenty one dash three from December sixteenth. If not, staff would be more than happy to give it to you. But that's what he's directed these state agencies to do. And that's the handwriting on the wall. So it is a good idea to start considering what could be out there.
Well, that's, we do show eighteen geothermal wells here.
Yep, yep.
Which I believe are sufficient to both keep heat and cool the house with much less energy. So.
As I've said to other applicants, in absence of regulations today, whatever you can put on the table is very welcome. Okay.
When we come next time, we'll bring our architects to go over this with you.
Okay, and so we're good with you. This was a must open tonight and we're all set. We will leave this application open. No other member of the public wishes to speak, right? I did ask that, right? I'm not seeing anybody. Okay, um, thank you.
So the so what is, we're just expecting the DPW then as a response?
And she's and he's gonna and he's gonna um, get in touch with conservation and work through the comments from conservation. Ms. Bonaventura, actually, that that she that was the exact words of conservation that this this piece of land is a treasure in Greenwich.
Yeah, no, I'm only just asking as it relates to the extension that we would really need to get.
We don't really need an extension. It's a must open on the on the thirtieth. We've opened it now.
Means we only have thirty five days now before we have to hear it again, and we we need more than that.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I'm not kidding when I say we we cannot put anything on prior to February fifteenth.
You you all, we may have to talk about adding a meeting. Could that would that help?
I'd rather just get an extension. That's what they're there for.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I got you. I got you. And we'll get an extension. But if you guys are that slammed, but then we add a meeting.
It's it's all, it's all manageable. We just need, everyone needs to put in their, put in their part.
We've got an extra one in July we could put in.
All right, Mr. Hagney, kindly provide Ms. DeLuca with the most extension she could possibly have.
Thank you.
We will review that with staff as well.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Hagney.
Thank you.
All right, folks. Um, well, we got through seven applications in three hours, not not stellar. But let's take a break now for dinner and we will see you at seven fifteen. Heard from somebody else who has COVID while we were on the break.
They just closed Greenwich High School.
No.
Yeah.
But they were going on vacation Friday anyway, right?
Thursday, half day Thursday.
So it's just the one extra day. I think it's smart.
Okay, well, we're going to say.
I'm here. I'm going off video for a moment.
It's really, okay, in other words, no chewing in public, right?
Well, in other words, um, when you're, when you and Mr. Hagney are ready, I'm ready.
I'm ready.
Well, we've got Victoria, Bob.
Uh, oh, yeah, Victoria's there.
Hi, Victoria.
Um, I'm just sending everyone information that's just come in.
Oh, I'm not on this application. Don't tell me I have to read and talk at the same time. That's worse than chewing gum and walking. Okay, nobody's appreciating my sense of humor tonight.
No, because we're all gonna have to do it, right?
Very amusing, Madam Chair.
Just try to make it a little light, you know? I refrain from the cartoons. Um, Mr. Yesky, are you with us? No. Okay, we'll give him another minute.
I had an announcement before we get started.
What's that?
This is the twenty first day of the twenty first month of the twenty first century.
And there's one in, there's a day next year that's a palindrome. And I couldn't remember what it was when you said that earlier today about or yesterday about today. And happy.
It's February, February second, right? Two, 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 two.
No, it it I can't remember. There was had zeros in it or something. I I'm 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 starting to get tired. It's only been three hours. You guys have better go home. Okay, um, we have Dennis. We um, don't need to have Bob Baralek or Arn right now. And so we have everybody and Peter Lowe is here, right?
Here.
Okay, alrighty, so we're now gonna continue. Thank you, everybody for waiting for us. The next application is Habard Lubovic of Greenwich for final site plan and special permit. This is uh, to modify uh, the conditions of the permit for the school. And before we start, and I'm going to remind everybody of this several times, that is what's before us is the modification of the conditions. And that's it. Speculation about other things that are unrelated to the application don't help the speaker. And um, bringing in other issues is not helpful to any points that people want to make. I I I know I sound school marmy about this, but we went on for two hours or something last time and people were significantly off topic. Okay, Mr. Hagney, now you have to stay on the straight and narrow.
Being school marmy, Madam Chair, would be appropriate, given that we're discussing a school.
There you go.
And uh, Mr. Adler is going and Rabbi and Mrs. Darren will at some point uh, join us as well. And there they are. Good evening. For the record, Tom Hagney on behalf of the applicant. After the last meeting, there were discussions on how we could make modifications to the conditions governing the use of the property. But to provide a balance between the school use and while protecting the neighborhood. And that was one of the things that is in the plan of conservation development and one of the things that the commission talked about at the last meeting. To that end, uh, we made a number of suggested modifications. And I I want to clarify them because it seemed like there was the need to clarify it based on the the briefing yesterday. First, the overall enrollment, uh, we're proposing to reduce from four hundred and fifty to four hundred students. And I'll explain how that fits in with what we're looking at uh, in terms of the preschool. We would eliminate the eighth grade. This is not intended to include high school uh, classes. It's a preschool through eighth grade. Limit the number of preschool and kindergarten students to seventy. That's not seventy preschool and seventy kindergarten. That's a total of seventy.
That's what I thought.
And and that and that fits in with reducing the the number of students to four hundred because we're looking at ending up with a school with pre K K and one through eight that would be in the three hundred and fifty to four hundred student range. And that's why we we think that all that works. Uh, and then we uh, proposed to prohibit the rental of campus fields to outside sports entities. And and that is to address two things. One is uh, for uh, noise that could be uh, generated from uh, the use of the fields. And second is to reduce the amount of traffic, particularly on weekends, which I believe is has been an issue uh, for the neighborhood. And um, and by limiting the number of students and particularly the number of preschool because those those children would be coming uh, by carpool. We have a very definitive way of addressing any issues of of park of uh, drop off, pickup and and traffic uh, that have been discussed. So what we're looking to do is provide very definitive ways uh, that are used in other school campuses around town uh, through uh, affidavits that are submitted on an annual basis to reduce overall uh, traffic and uh, to reduce any the noise being generated uh, on particularly on the weekends. We had also previously proposed to prohibit the use of bullhorns on the campus. I want to say that there is a substantial difference between the Habard school and what Carmel had on the campus. The uh, the makeup of the student body at uh, the Habard would be ninety percent Greenwich residents. So we're we're dealing with just our own community that this school would be serving. Carmel, on the other hand, also a religious school, uh, drew mainly from outside town. So it was predominantly not Greenwich residents that were being served. And and I I think that 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 is a significant difference because you're not looking at as many buses. Are you looking at being able to control the traffic better? And uh, and you're serving your community and providing uh, diversity of educational opportunities through uh, this particular religious school. We also showed through the traffic study, which was uh, really backed up by uh, your traffic consultant beta, uh, that there is no change in the level of service. Particularly in the in at the times when we have the most pickup and drop off going on uh, on the campus because it's outside the what's sort of unusual. The 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 peak hour is two thirty to three thirty on Lake Avenue versus, you know, four thirty to five thirty, it might be on on the post road. Uh, and uh, also, we're not in the seven thirty to eight thirty peak as to when the predominantly, the the predominantly when the children are either uh, are dropped off and and staff arrives. So well, we think that the the proposals that we've uh, put forward uh, do strike that balance uh, between the use of the school uh, to encourage a private school uh, to provide religious education to town and uh, providing uh, a a specific way to protect uh, the neighborhood from uh, any kind of noise or uh, or traffic intrusion, which I know has been a concern that the commission uh, has had as as well as one that the neighbors have. You did receive twenty minutes ago, a a couple of letters uh, from uh, the attorney for Rock Ridge. Uh, and uh, one is a recitation of other material which was submitted earlier. But the other uh, has a list of conditions. Now, there are twenty seven of them. Uh, so it's quite a few. Uh, but in looking through them, I I I thought that there was a good deal that we could work with. And if these are what Rock Ridge is putting forward, I I think our continued uh, working on this with you and then also going through this uh, with uh, the Rock Ridge Association can bear some fruit. I I found I found it to be very encouraging, so.
Well, we have a bit of an issue there because um, this is a must close on the sixth of January. And we had asked you at the last meeting to work with the neighbors because we knew we were running out of time. So um, if you're gonna continue to work on the conditions, the time would have been to do it last week.
Well, unfortunately, we weren't able to work out our schedules so that they uh, that we could do that. But uh, this is the first time I'm seeing this level level of specificity on what conditions the uh, the neighborhood would look to have. And I I can't say that they would all be acceptable and we can just be done now. But I think it does give us a good deal to work with.
If if we received an extension, we could hear this at the January fourth meeting if there was an extension. But having read through the conditions, um, and I agree that many of them are uh, ones that we've spoken about throughout the public hearing proceedings thus far. It does still beg the question, however, that the commission raised last time about the specifics of how compliance can be obtained. Example, the um, the the limit on the number of buses and cars that can come onto the campus seem relatively the same and it's I'm left confused. I assume others are too, as to how that would work, particularly with the preschool students. The way that the conditions are proposed here would be forty five cars. And I know that carpooling is is was represented as one of the solutions. And how that works with the with the faculty is very confusing to me. I I don't understand the numbers. So I think very clear documentation on what is agreed to in terms of the commission is of the conditions is really a requirement, I think, in order for there to be a comfort level moving forward.
And and Katie, to that point, I, we want to have something that works. And you know, you said that at the briefing yesterday, and we want that as well. And so uh, I I think that that this is certainly an additional framework that we can use. And uh, and hopefully resolve it uh, within the time uh, allotted. If not, um, you know, we would then be looking at withdrawing and resubmitting so that we would have another timeline to work with. Not that I don't want to resolve it within this time, but if if it doesn't work out that way, then we certainly want to be able to uh, to come back to you at a later time.
So Mr. Hagney, you would withdraw to uh, so we, e- even us, we could, uh, you know, um, address the that letter that just came in with those particular conditions. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, I think that I think that we all need to look at it uh, as a new, essentially new proposal and see what the commission finds acceptable or not. What need would need to be revised to meet what Katie referred to as clear documentation of of how the school would operate. And what's acceptable to uh, to the Habard.
Okay, Mrs. DeLuca, Mrs. Alba, how how would we want to proceed here then?
Well, I I think we should decide that after we've talked a little bit. First of all, um, I just want to say that the point that Katie made yesterday was also that clarity in conditions is very important and vagueness sets people up for failure and for confusion as to when there's a violation or not. And that stayed with me last night as I was working through what could be conditioned. So it's an important thing to bear in mind. I I think the question is really the other way around, Mr. McRae. The applicant can give us an extension until the sixth of January. We could then, at that time, is really we could, if the applicant has not progressed far enough or we feel that we are unable to decide, we could act then on that. Um, so it's really the applicant's call if what they want to do. We can't ask them to. I don't believe we can ask you to withdraw, but we can ask you for an extension and that's what I would do now.
We can always ask for many things.
I ask for trees a lot and you tell me you've already got one, so um, I'm not batting a hundred percent here. No.
Oh, we'll work, we'll work on the trees too.
Okay.
Uh, we can, I, uh, a Rabbi and Mrs. Darren are on the the call as well. They have not had a an opportunity to review these conditions, but uh, certainly, I think, uh, from our standpoint, having a a dialogue and and a serious one, which is how I take uh, this letter that we just received from Attorney Kaufman. Uh, I I think is is well worth spending the time, but I will allow Rabbi and Mrs. Darren uh, to uh, to indicate whether I have the authority to provide an extension letter to you. Rabbi?
It would be nice to work something out tonight. We went through the conditions. There's twenty seven. There's two that we have comments for. It would be important to our organization to see if we could come to a final vote tonight and a decision.
I can tell you this.
On that, Madam Chair.
I can tell you this. I don't believe I, from what the commission was saying yesterday, I'm not sure that they're gonna be ready to vote. Uh, we I we would have to see later on. Uh, we must, we have to close it, but that doesn't mean we would necessarily decide tonight if people need time to think. So we would close it so there's no further public input. But then the commission has to make the calls to whether or not, when we decide it and we have, how many days, Katie?
Sixty-five, sixty-five.
Sixty-five days to decide, to decide it after we close it. So we would not necessarily decide it tonight and I just don't know whether, based on what Katie was saying yesterday, where everybody's got in their minds, how to write the conditions and how to incorporate them so that they're clear and they're a win-win. I don't know, because as you know, we're not allowed to talk to each other unless y'all are with us, so, okay.
Well, you're with now, do, do, we're, did we, were, did we receive these, uh?
Yes, um, this apparently, I, I'm, I'm, it's in an email that Jack, that would just came from, um, Attorney Kaufman and that Katie just forwarded to us and, um, it's one of the attachments to that email. And.
Okay, there's one that just i- is a recitation of the history of the.
Yes, this email is, um, from, at seven sixteen P M. It came.
Right.
And there were actually two letters in that email.
And there's two letters and I believe it is the first letter.
It's the first one, yeah.
Uh, no, I'm lying. It's the second.
I, I, I only get, I only have one, but okay.
All right, well, um, we'll send it to you now. Okay, because there's two in mine.
All right, but i- in any event, th- th- there isn't a whole lot of time for the commission, it seems to me, to absorb what's in here and, and pass judgment on it.
No, it's exactly what I'm trying to say. I, you said it more succinctly, uh, which is hard for us. We could close this, but I don't see how we could digest these things. I would very much like to have input on the ones that are problematic for the applicant. I, I just printed them, I, and I would love to have you talk about the conditions and what you see as problematic. Mr. Hagney.
And, uh, I'd like to have, uh, uh, Mrs. Darren and, and the Rabbi, uh, chiming in on, on these as well.
They gotta run the school.
Uh, so the, the first, uh, would be all existing conditions of approval unless herein modified, granted by planning and zoning, or the zoning board of appeals, for a special exception or a special permit shall remain in full force and effect and shall apply to the current application and tenants of record.
You know what? If you don't read it verbatim, I think it'll save a lot of time. Let's just go to what is problematic. Okay? One of the things, I, I, I'm, I'm looking, for example, at number three where it says the school shall, um, what, what is it? You know, it says ancillary school functions only. I think we need to be very clear on what is meant by ancillary. Okay? All right, um, so Mr. Hagney, just tell me what is a problem for your client? And, and please, um, Mr. And Ms. Darren, Darren, please feel free, or Rabbi Darren, I'm sorry. Please feel free to jump in. He's laughing.
If, if we're going in sequential order, Madam Chair, number two is problematic. That's the one that, that suggests that there be any, um, that, that, that the special permit expires on June thirtieth.
Yeah.
I think, I think it needs to run with the land period, whether it's a Habad or another school, the conditions are the conditions.
Yep. Okay, so two is a, okay, so two is an ex nay for us. And three, that we would just need to define school functions. Go ahead, um, please, um, Rabbi Darren, Ms. Darren. Mr. Hagney. Tell us what you would see here as conditions that you cannot live with and then the commission will be able to work on the rest.
Well, Mariachi, were, are there specific ones that you identified that we could jump to rather than?
Yeah, let's go to number seven. The school shall run from mid-August to the end of June and no classes should be held in the summer recess. Two summers ago, we got approval to have, well, three summers ago, to have the preschool running during the summer. Um, those children are all from Greenwich. The parents want the program operating.
This is Camp, this is Camp Gan.
Correct.
So it's actually, it's actually not Camp Gan per se. Camp Gan is ages four and up. Ages two and three is part of a preschool license. So it's run under the Connecticut license for preschools, the early childhood of Connecticut. It is run with ratio, training, every aspect of it is not run like a camp. It's run like a school. And many families that are coming sign up for twelve months a year. So we actually need the condition in seven should say from mid-August to mid-August. We have a one-week vacation break.
I- in regards to the preschool age, because that is a different state license than the camp. Two different departments.
Okay. All right. Okay, so I think we got that. I, I feel like the word here is classes. The operative word is classes and you're not saying classes. Okay, so, um, no classes or outside activities on evenings and weekends, except for special events associated with school uses. You're okay with that, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so tell us what else you would have a difficulty with.
That was basically it.
Okay. All right, well, the commission can work with this then and we can go through.
Well, I mean, may I ask, Madam Chair, the forty-five.
Yes, ma'am.
Because that's less cars, I think, than you would represent as you would need, because that was forty-five, I think you could, y- you represented that you could manage that for the, for the preschool and K. And that was based on, um, carpooling and the dropping off of the ch- of the children by parents or whatever. But how then do you get the teachers into the school?
Well, number thirteen says up to forty-five private cars, they transfer students to and from the property, inclusive of preschool and kindergarten. So it's very geared that those forty-five cars are referring just to transferring the students.
Okay, because the existing conditions, I don't forget. So it says, nine sixteen, it says the number of school buses or vans shall not exceed eighteen and the number of cars transporting faculty and staff should not exceed fifty. So that's new. That's what they've just put in based on what you had represented, I guess, in your, I'm sorry, we're all just reading this for the first time, so.
So that, that's a total of sixty-eight, right? And between.
It's total of nine, ninety-five cars so far for all the teachers, faculty and staff. And I think you have a hundred and fourteen faculty and staff though, and then you have fifty cars for them. Is that going to be enough?
Well, right now we have a few cars of teachers that commute and carpool together. And that's something we will consistently have, because our parents adore the Habad teachers that commute from New York every day. And we, as a school, provide vans for them to commute and they commute together.
And these are, are the minivans you've been referring to. So, so that's a car in terms of what we're talking about here.
Exactly. It's an eight-passenger van.
So, so, I mean, I, I'm only saying this because, you know, you've noted that you think you'll have a hundred and four or fourteen, I forget the exact numbers. But is that under your current conditions or the proposed conditions once you're fully operating up to eighth grade?
Once we're, once we're fully operating up to eighth grade.
Okay. Um, I think this process is going to be messy if we try to do an application on a goal like this.
I, I agree. I agree. I think, you know, we'll, uh, we'll continue with, um, as, as you asked earlier, the most important thing is to get clarity.
Yes.
So, you know, we'll work with, uh, our attorney and we'll work with the conditions here.
And you can work with Katie.
And with Katie, of course.
Would it, would it be possible, actually, if you took every condition and literally wrote something underneath it and said, you know, here's, here's either how we're going to do it, or here's documentation from Mr. Adler explaining that this is, you know, compliant and we can't, and within the rules or whatever, you know, whatever it is, just so that, that there's a document that everyone understands what a bus is, what a van is, what, you know, what, what a, a school activity is. What, I mean, even the, just quickly breezing through here, the thing about the, um, the chapel use. I have to admit, I don't know, you know, what, what is the chapel used for, for religious purposes? Is it just for educational religious purposes or is it other purposes? I mean, I think we need to be clear, um, social events, it says, I'm not sure what that really means, so if.
And Katie, on that, on that, on that, the exact point you're on, intensity of existing use of the chapel. Intent, how, how does, how's that documented? I mean, wh- wh- what is the intensity of existing use?
So if you just, if you write down below each, each condition what you believe it means and how you can comply with it, that would really be helpful, I think.
Okay, Attorney Hagney?
Yes, yeah, we can certainly, uh, that together.
Doesn't there have to be some coordination, uh, with the attorney, uh, the other attorney?
Yes, yes, certainly, Mr. Lo, and, and we would, uh, we would make the time available to do that.
Okay, so, yeah, because it's going to be a mess if we try to do this, uh, online, as, you know, live. I think we need time to digest. I'm, I'm just, every time I look down, um, I know Bob Baralek's a fast reader, so he's picking stuff up. If you've got comments, Bob, um, go ahead and throw them in, but, uh.
I, I think, Margaret, Margaret, what I'd like to do, if you guys don't mind, is, uh, it may be inappropriate, but why don't I read what I think seems odd to me and I'll send an email to Katie that she can share and put in the public record if she likes. Is that appropriate?
That sounds like a plan. Just, if you can email Katie anytime and give her your thoughts.
I'm happy to do that.
Katie can do with it as she thinks correct. That work for you, Katie? Hesitating?
Hesitating. So you're going to write me comments on the twenty-seven points?
I'm going to go through this and ask and, and, and look for things that I think are ambiguous and just point out what I think are ambiguities, rather than do it verbally here on something that I've read for like seven and a half minutes.
I mean, just so it's understood by everybody for the purposes of the record, that is solely your opinion and the commission as a whole obviously may not agree with that when, when.
No, and it's actually, he's only sending it to you.
Correct.
Just to you.
Discussion amongst the commission outside of a meeting, of course.
No, exactly.
Only going to send it to you so you could share with the other side.
All right, Dennis, Dennis.
This, this conversation's gone crazy.
You're right, I agree. Trying to kill it.
Let's back up. I mean, th- there's a new letter, everyone has to read it. We, we probably are going to need an extension. Nobody should be writing memos on the side or something like that. The commission needs to discuss this in, in public forum. Uh, you know, I don't know, Katie, I think that's where you were going with that at this point. I, I would propose.
Thank you.
That we, um, uh, keep this open for now, ask for an extension again, because it's going to take more. Ask the applicant to deal with the, uh, the lawyers that sent the letter to see if there's any other points and then we need to go through it. Uh, and between now and what is it, January fourth? And then we're going to have a bunch of questions on the fourth, most likely, um, you know, this could be an extension. Who knows?
Let's see how it goes on the fourth.
Good, let's see how it goes on the fourth. All this other stuff, um, it's crazy talk. I mean, you can't do this on the spot. I don't know why somebody would send a letter at seven sixteen and expect us to, to, to have good faith efforts to cover it at this point in time. And I don't think commissioners should be giving opinions on the side. Katie, that's like illegal, isn't it?
Well, it's, it's if it's giving aside to the, to the applicant or, I mean, that's why I was making the point that it is not.
Bob is allowed to.
Commission.
All commissioners are allowed to reach out individually for, to staff requesting input. Okay, Mr. Worcester Wells.
Yeah, just in terms of process, wouldn't it be easier for the applicant and the lawyer for Rock Ridge to try and work out an agreement, working off that letter and come up with something that they both agree on and then it comes to us and then we review it? Otherwise, it's a three-ring circus and you only need a two-ring circus at this point.
Exactly, and that's what we asked for at the last meeting and apparently the schedules didn't coincide. But now you can do it, right?
We're asking again for the January fourth meeting. That's exactly what we're saying.
Okeydoke.
I would, I would just add, everybody, that the Lake Avenue people need to be included in that conversation. So they have, if they, just because there's no attorney, I think that in fairness, they've been very vocal over the years.
Well, who, who sent the letter? Who sent the letter?
This Kaufman sent, sent the letter representing Rock Ridge, but the Lake Avenue side needs to be represented.
There, there's an assumption that they're all, they're all one and the same, but they're not.
No, but the point here being, we're going to have a public hearing, Katie, and we're going to discuss this at a public hearing. We're not going to leave anybody out. We don't do that.
Uh, all I'm saying is if someone from the Lake Avenue side wants to be the Lake Avenue representative, all of them, whatever. I'm just saying that there's another voice here, so don't be concerned if, or don't be surprised if everybody feels good about this coming into January fourth, only to find out that the Lake Avenue people aren't happy.
Good, good point. Hopefully they're listening or somebody's listening on their behalf.
Yes.
And they can get in the process. And to get in the process, but Katie, if nothing else, they can call you and you can make sure they get in the process, right?
Correct.
Uh, Attorney Kaufman and I have been, uh, corresponding and, uh, we're looking to set up a time tomorrow. But to me, I've told her I will accommodate her schedule.
All right. Okay, so January fourth, we have public hearing. We somehow, we're going to make sure the Lake Avenue voices are integrated. We have public hearing. Everybody talks about where, what has come, what consensus has been reached and the commission weighs in. And we will in turn, before that for, January fourth meeting, y'all will send us every single piece of paper that you want to put in the public record, so we have lots of time to review that.
So, uh, just to be clear, ju- just to be clear, are, are we, uh, constrained by the calendar a little bit here, Katie?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Uh, just in terms of what can be submitted onto the record, once it's closed, you have plenty of time, you know, sixty-five days to, to render the decision. But in terms of getting information on the record, you are constrained to, um, the end.
January fourth is the last day that we can take, given our schedule, it'll be the last day we can take public comment. But then we'll have time to take that and incorporate it into a decision.
Ju- just an observation here. I, I, I feel like, um, there, there are parties here that, um, we, we seem to be waiting to the eleventh hour with a gun to our heads and now are forced into a position to pass judgment quickly.
Yeah, I think Dennis said the same thing. I think Mr. Yaski made the same point. I, I was trying to be helpful in the beginning when we got the letter and people started talking about it, but I don't see how we can be helpful with twenty-seven points. I think y'all are, uh, hitting the nail on the head. So, January fourth, go ahead, somebody, Mr., yes, Rabbi Darren.
It would be helpful if you're, in, in terms of the time, as, uh, I think Mr. Lo and Mr. Yaski were pointing out that, that, you know, where, there's no reason to wait for the eleventh hour. I think, Madam Chair, your original suggestion to close it tonight and just allow the attorneys to, um.
We will not be able to hear from the attorneys once we've closed it. It's over.
Right, I understand, but your original suggestion to close it was that the attorneys should work together on creating a document that, uh, is.
We can't accept that document from you once we've closed it. Once we've closed, it's over. So that's why we have to leave it open. And then on the fourth, by the fourth, you give us everything, you know, over that weekend, please, over, on the Friday before that. Before, um, and then we work on it on the weekend and, and everybody, we come to a public hearing and we hopefully get this resolved. That work for everybody?
For sake of clarity, your original suggestion to close it, what did you have in mind then?
I was just saying, I was just making sure that everybody knew that if we were to close now, once we close, we have, I had said to you, you said, I want you, I would like you to decide tonight. And I said, I don't think the commission, even if we close tonight, from what I heard yesterday, is seeming ready to decide it. I could be wrong. I just, they're questions. And they have sixty-five days then to decide after we close an item. That's what the state law gives us. Okay, so, and then we can't take anything else from the attorneys anymore. It's all becomes inside. And we can't talk to each other once we close it either. That's the other thing. We are then forbidden to dialogue with each other.
Thank you, okay.
Okay, all right, okay, so we've got a plan that doesn't involve us scrambling around. Um, the only thing I would like to do is, we do have hands up from the public. Is everybody okay? We've got two hands up. Is everybody okay? Up, three. Is everybody okay with listening to the public? Um, folks, I'm probably going to limit you to two minutes, except for the attorney from the other side. And, um, she'll get my school Marm lecture too, okay? Um, we're getting a lot of hands up. Um, you got your, um, Dennis?
Uh, I guess, you know, I, I want public, but we've already gotten comments. We now have new, a new plan here to go back over material that we've covered at least twice, a third time, and we're going to do it on a fourth or a fifth, is not helpful to a settlement here.
I understand that. I understand. I understand that, I understand that, but this is a public hearing. And we are hearing an item under the public hearing, and therefore we are opening it to, we would open it to public comment. We can limit the time that the public speaks. I would suggest no more than two minutes. Mr. LaRoe, do you have your clock? Okey dokey. All right, so, now to the public. Yeah, yeah, I'm coming, I'm coming. I know you're going to say that, so hang on tight. Folks from the public who have your hands up, except, and this part applies to more hands going up. Okay, you have your hands up. Please give us new information. If you're not going to add new information, please refrain from speaking now, because we have everything you've said, we have the recordings. That's the first thing. The second thing is, you know what's before us, you've seen what they proposed on the modification of the conditions. Please stay focused on the application that's before us, because you don't help your comments if you digress from what is before us. Okay, that's it, I'm going to keep saying it. The first speaker is Daniel Mann. Two minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Luca. As you said, my name is Daniel Mann. I represent Carmel Academy here on this call today to object to this proposal. As you noted in Attorney Kaufman's most recent letter, Chabad is no longer the contract buyer for the Carmel campus. The reason why that is relevant is Carmel has been excluded from any of these most recent communications, including Chabad's proposal of limiting students, eliminating grades, restricting campus uses, and Carmel has not been given the opportunity to review all these, and has certainly not approved or signed anything that supports this application as it stands. All Carmel did support in the original application was the extended use of their pre-K and kindergarten on a temporary basis. So, I've already spoken with the board on this. This is their point of view, and I think is incredibly relevant for the commission to take that perspective, and understand that Carmel does not support this from a landlord-owner perspective.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mann. So, Mr. Hagney. Your client was authorized to make this application based on the authority granted to them by the Carmel School?
Yes, that's correct.
And has that authority been withdrawn?
No, I, I have not received any notification of that, and from the, the standpoint of, are we a contract purchaser or not?
That's not the question. No, please, that is not the question I asked you. Please only answer.
The answer is no.
Okay, all I want to know is, you are the, you are still authorized by the Carmel Academy as the owner of record to make this application before us. That's all I need to know.
Yes.
It has not been withdrawn. No other comments about who the contract purchaser is. That is not the question before us. Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Kaufman, you would be the next speaker. Again, please, we don't need to, I'm sorry, I'm going to put it to you very bluntly, we do not need to hear our regulations. Please, if you would focus on the application before us. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. For the record, my name is Jackie Kaufman, and as you know, I represent the Rock Ridge Association. We have submitted some documents to you and to Attorney Hagney. We did provide those to you only before this meeting. If we'd been together, we would have run through those in a more traditional fashion. However, I only received revised conditions or for consideration from the applicant on Friday, and that was through, through staff. So, we needed a, you know, a few days to, to pull that together. But also, as Mr. Mann just mentioned to you, and I think it's important, and it has influenced the ability for the Rock Ridge Association to provide conditions of approval and to modify its position based on, given our last few meetings. Because there have been, there has been a change of circumstances, and that is that the Chabad is no longer the contract purchaser. So, some of the items that you've identified as not being relevant to this particular application, but which we maintain are, have been eliminated to a certain extent. And we can now focus on just the school use and ensuring that the proposed school uses here remain consistent with the existing conditions and with the private agreement. I think we do have a great opportunity here now to meld both the zoning, planning and zoning, and PZBA conditions of the past with the private conditions that have been required between the parties within the association and with the Japanese school. Certainly, the contract, the new contract purchaser may also wish to be a part of this discussion, as well as Carmel. So we do have some work ahead of us, and hopefully that can be accomplished in the next week. To the extent it cannot, I'm encouraged by hearing Attorney Hagney say that he and his client are willing to work through it and withdraw and potentially refile the application, all of us wearing a different hat and coming to the table with, with a different understanding, and hopefully what will be in agreement on these conditions. I had no intention of you going through each of these, and in fact, what I had chatted about with Stefano, which, which I think she reiterated to you yesterday on your briefing, was that we were working on these. We wanted to have them be responsive to the conditions that exist now, which is why you see 27, most of them become reiterated. But also as talking points to address all of the different issues that you've been asked. I think that Stef has done a great job with the, its most recent staff report to you, and has captured many of the outstanding questions that the Rock Ridge Association has continuously asked of the applicant. It, it was disappointing to me that tonight, I was hoping to hear from the applicant and Attorney Hagney, the responses to those questions. I was hoping that those would either be provided in writing or provided in, in more detail. Because there are, as everyone has identified, there are continued operational and programmatic holes in this application that, that I think can be easily answered. And what the proposed conditions hope to accomplish is that we have used a tool that we've all used many times before, and that Attorney Hagney seems comfortable continuing here, which is to provide annual reports to zoning enforcement officer or to PNC staff. And I, I think it would be most helpful not to just have that as a prospective document in the future, but to have that come to you. If, if you are not going to put a term on this particular special permit, which we do think is appropriate, and yesterday I thought you, you all thought was also appropriate, and perhaps we can continue to have a conversation about that with town, the town attorney. If we are not going to, to limit it and provide ourselves with an additional opportunity to come back to you, not us, but any future applicant, be it Chabad or otherwise, or the future, the future owner, then having the examples that would be required as of next year, I think would be very critical to the commission being comfortable with the proposed conditions, as well as, as, as well as Rock Ridge Association. I think that those things are all very critical. It's important, very, very important to us, as you know, that the, the record is thorough and accurate. The first letter that we provided to you is in effort to reply and correct the record and the statements that were made by the applicant, because it's, it's critical that you know that Rock Ridge has worked very hard from, well before I became involved, to try and work with this applicant. So, we, we look here, and, and we're being criticized for providing you with conditions that we hope will result in a good result for all in our neighborhood, when really, these things could have been identified and mitigated and agreed to before the application even came to you. So, we stand by at the ready and, you know, to, to work quickly if we can do that. If not, we are committed to continuing to work to, to make this right, and to ensure that all of the conditions are consistent with your special permit standards. The, I won't go through each of them. I know that we talked about a little bit about the, you know, classes in the summer as being problematic. I, I do have to mention that that was not part of the Chabad's, even its administrative application. You know how I feel about that, that approval. But even in the conditions of that approval, that was not disclosed. And certainly, any, any approval that the Office of Early Childhood Development provides to an applicant is
Ms. Kaufman?
Yes.
Not before us. The conditions of the special permit are all that we're discussing.
Well, that is one I'm talking about when we talk about.
All we say is, you have to be licensed or you're not licensed. What conditions are placed by, by a state agency? We only require that they be licensed. Anything else that you wanted to add?
Well, yes, and that is critical. I understand that they're licensed to have that at their Mason Street facility, but they are currently not licensed to have that as part of their administrative approval. That's never been disclosed. That's new information to us today. So that's something that we'll take up, but I wanted to clarify the record, and I hope that you'll also read our statement correcting the record as well.
Yes, we have had an opportunity, I believe we tried to glance through. I'm glad that you clarified that the expectation was not that we should try to figure all this out on the fly. We were trying to be nice to you guys, but it made us really uncomfortable. We all just, I squirmed immediately. Okay. Anything else, Ms. Kaufman, that you would like to add?
It was, it was our intention that we.
We got it.
Letter, which you didn't read, but which Steph also knows that.
Got it. Okay, anything else?
If I can just spend, I will wrap up quickly, but it concludes with that, and we were requesting a continuance that we could work through these. But I would do want you to know, this is made in good faith effort by the Rock Ridge Association to, to, to work with the applicant. You did also receive at the last minute today, a very inflammatory letter about.
Please, please, the other thing that the commission does not allow people to do is the he, he said, she said about inflammatory letters and who accused whom. It's just a bad idea, so please don't go there. We don't want to hear it. Not to do with, we want facts related to the application. I'm sorry, but that's all we want to hear.
These are facts related to a letter you received earlier.
I don't want to hear, I just don't want to hear the accusations. It doesn't help us make a, a logical, thoughtful decision if we get that. What other point would you like to make, Ms. Kaufman?
That we appreciate the opportunity to continue to, to work with, with the applicant, but also we are acting in good faith, and I certainly hope that the commission sees that, because this is a, a large departure from where we were a month ago.
That's great, except it was two weeks ago. Thank you very much.
Time flies.
Yes, thank you. I'm just making clear that two weeks ago, the commission asked for this.
We did not, I do have to clarify, Madam Chairwoman. This of the applicant two weeks ago, we have asked for these things for a long time. So we only had the opportunity to respond to them, having received conditions on Friday, which they did not even send to us directly. So, I, you know, I, I do ask Mr. Hagney, as I have done the entire process on behalf of my client for four months, to, I copy him on everything, and I asked for the same courtesy in return. But I don't like the accusation towards Rock Ridge that.
Okay, we're not accusing Rock Ridge of anything. Thank you, Ms. Kaufman. Okay, our next speaker is Danielle, oh, wait a minute, that person just went away? What happened? Danielle V. When you join kindly, would you tell us your last name and spell it for us, for the public record? What? Yes, can you please give us your last name?
Sure, it's Volberg V, like Victor O, Oscar, Lima, B, Beta, E, Echo, R, Robert, G, George. For Danielle, so, thank you, Madam Chairwoman and the committee. I, I would just like to say that I'm a parent of two children in the Chabad school and preschool. And one of the, I'm a Greenwich resident, I've been here for a number of years. And I would like to just note that Hamad is the only Jewish school beyond the preschool level in, in Greenwich. And it's an important item for, for our family, having made the decision to move to Greenwich, that this was available. And I would also like to mention that, you know, from my experience with, with our children, is that, you know, it builds community and a sense of community when the children can sort of start from a preschool age and then go all the way through, you know, regular elementary school, and then hopefully later on, further out, middle school. That sense of community and values that, that this school builds, in addition to the education, it's important for maintaining kind of a strong Jewish community presence here in Greenwich, which is important for diversity. It's just an additional point regarding traffic, which I think was one of the issues mentioned. You know, I'm, I'm there for drop-off and pickup several times a week, and I also tend to field club next door, and there's never been any traffic that I've noticed. So I just want to make that a public record. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you very much, Mr. Volberg. Our next speaker is Stephanie Liss.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi, um, I thank you for giving me a moment to speak. I also wanted to.
If you're a parent and you want to, and you're just speaking in support of Chabad generally, that doesn't help with our decision. If you've got facts about the use and the property and, you know, the noise, those kinds of things are helpful to us.
Um, sure, yes, I was going to speak on the, the number of cars and the noise.
Thank you.
So, I also am a parent, have been a part of the community since 2014, and there are twice a day, and have had no problems with traffic. Actually, have probably had less problems with traffic than when the school was its prior school of Carmel. And there is plenty of parking, and nothing like that has been a problem at all this year. And also as far as noise, you know, honestly, it's, the only loud noise we hear is the, the construction going on at the field club next door. Really, it's, you know, playground time, there's no music, there's no, it's, I mean, I, I live next door to an elementary school, used to hearing, you know, kids play on the playground and the, the little children are much quieter than, you know, your typical elementary school playground. So, you know, I really, I really support the applicant and, and hope that, that everything can, can be approved, because I think it's all being done in, in good faith and with with very good, honest intentions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Liss. Mr. Jordan Rubin is next, again, asking if you would add new points and specific to the special permit modification that is before us. Not sure anybody's hearing me, but I keep saying. Thank you, sir.
Sure, I, I have a young son who will be attending the school this summer or next year. And we actually live in Riverside by the elementary school. And there's incredible traffic in Riverside and Greenwich in the morning, in the early afternoon. We're over on Lake Avenue quite a bit. And truly fortunate that that, that area, it's, the school is located on a major road that I have not had traffic problems with in the past, and wouldn't expect any in the future. And I think it's great that there are frankly options to divert some of the students away from from the traffic in Riverside that overwhelms the neighborhood in the mornings and the afternoons. I also want to note that I'm not as close to the process as some of the other folks in this call, but I find it very strange that a letter. but I find it very strange that a letter will be submitted with 27 conditions in the middle of a meeting.
Well, I think that got clarified, so I think all is good with that now, was not meant to be addressed at the meeting. Okay, anything else, Mr. Rubin?
Not, we love the school, we love Habad, and we're, it's one of the reasons we moved to Greenwich last year.
All right, okay, thank you very much, Mr. Rubin. Our next speaker is Leah Ivanhoe.
Hi, my name is Leah Ivanhoe. Hi.
Hello, Ms. Ivanhoe.
How are you? I am both a parent and a Greenwich resident, and my family has been, you know, part of the town of Greenwich for over 30 years now. And, you know, my son has been in the preschool. It was very important to us just to have a Jewish component to his education as well as a nurturing environment. And in terms of traffic, I've been stuck behind trucks on Lake Avenue from the Merritt all the way to downtown more often than I've been slowed down by Habad traffic. And sorry for my labor breathing, I'm heavily pregnant here. And in terms of noise, you know, we've lived next to construction noise that is way more disruptive. And he, we also live next to an elementary school where we hear the sounds of children playing happily on the playground. I work from home, I hear it during my day, but it's nothing that's disruptive to my career or my work environment. And it's, you know, at an appropriate time, we've heard fireworks going on in that country more often. That is actually disruptive. So, you know, in terms of the school running all year round, my husband and I are both working parents and having, you know, the school available, that preschool program is very important to us so that our child can be in a nurturing, loving environment and also learn all year round so that we don't have to worry about figuring out the childcare component for a part of a year when he can have consistency in his schedule and his routine. And also as a growing family, we, as I said, I'm heavily pregnant here, we, you know, want to have that continuity for our son. So between all of those things, Habad has really, you know, been a positive, you know, part of our lives and the community for us and helping us to be a positive part of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Ivanhoe, and best wishes with the upcoming birth. Our next speaker, I'm going to make an exception here again, you guys. And normally we only let somebody speak once. However, this is Mr. Mann, who apparently is a manager with Carmel. I think I got that right. So, Mr. Mann, I'm just going to ask you to keep your comments as short as possible since our limit is one speaker, one time for speakers at an application. Go ahead. You need to unmute yourself, sir. Okay, it's not happening. I'm trying to unmute him and it's not happening.
Hello?
There you are. Okay, good.
Hi, apologies, sorry about that. Thank you again, Madam Chairwoman. I would just like, I would just like to address Attorney Hegney's comment about the rescinding of approval from the Carmel Board. He is correct, we have not sent in a formal letter, but that is only because the board has not seen these brand new changes that are completely unrelated to Habad's operation of a pre-K and kindergarten. So Carmel, you know, reserves the right to review this new application with these new conditions before any decision should be made.
So all we have, Mr. Mann, is we have or should have, I haven't had a chance to double check as we've been talking. We should have in our records that Carmel has authorized. All we need is the next time we hear this item, whether that authorization is still in place. That's all the Commission needs to know.
And when will Carmel get the final application materials with all the final things?
You will get it no later than we do, which is the afternoon of, oh, wait, it's a holiday on the 31st, right? Katie, so you, it will come on the 30th of December. The Commission will receive that afternoon, will receive all the application material. The way it works normally is we receive everything on the Friday afternoon before a Tuesday hearing, and it will be available to the public at the exact same time. So when you, when we get it, you get it.
Wonderful. I will make sure that we are aware of that date and I'll have the board ready to review that to send.
So whatever, yeah, and all we need is a valid application before us so we can decide it and we can work on it.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, sir. Okay, now we go back to Mr. Steven Feldman. Mr. Feldman, if you would go ahead. Hello.
Hi, can you hear me? Hi.
Yes, sure.
I'm a member of the Greenwich community and have been for under a year, but Habad has become an important part of our family's life here, and I just wanted to mention something about traffic, just to be on point. My daughter attends a prominent private school in the area. And I have to say the traffic for that school, which is right in the center of Greenwich, dwarfs anything I've ever seen at Habad. And I've never frankly heard anybody complain about it or make an issue. And when I've taken my son, who was at the Habad preschool, and both of them to camp during the summer there, it's really never been an issue. I mean, the the any minimal traffic is just absolutely nothing compared to the large private schools in the area, whether it's Brunswick or Greenwich Country Day or whatever, it's it's not even close. It seems to be smooth sailing, which is consistent with the views that I think you've heard from a number of folks tonight who have direct experience being there. And I think any kind of minimal disruption is what you would expect that there already probably was from Carmel Academy. And frankly, completely worth it to have a Jewish center of life in the area. There are a number of church-based preschools in the area, very few Jewish-based preschools. It's an important place, and it seems like Habad is doing everything possible to get there. So, you know, I'd just speak and speak in support of that and say that I certainly have not heard or seen traffic or noise being an issue any more than you would see at any other type of school.
Thank you very much, sir. Our next speaker is Michelle Volberg. Ma'am, we normally only allow one speaker for per household. If you are part of Dan V's household, are you adding new comments?
Yes, I just want to quickly add a comment about noise.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mostly spoke about traffic, so I won't say on that topic. Having me. So I actually run my own business for my home, and we live next door to North Myena School. I sometimes have to leave my house and go sit in the parking lot at Carmel where my kids are both enrolled in school because it's much quieter there and I can actually take conference calls. So the noise really there is minimal, if at all. I also attend the field club next door pretty often during the day between drop off and pickup and hear absolutely nothing.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, ma'am. Our next speaker is Melanie Clement.
Hi.
Go ahead. Yep.
Okay, um, thank you so much. I just wanted to say that I just moved here to Greenwich six months ago after 20 plus years in New York. Thank you so much. And after 20 plus years in New York City. And I really love it here. And one of the biggest criteria for moving to Greenwich was its solid Jewish community. And I found the Habad and I met Mari Ashi, and she was warm, welcoming, inviting. And both my children are attending there. And just to comment on traffic, you know, I'm new to Greenwich, but there are two, I don't know if you've discussed this, but there are two very large traffic circles right nearby. And I feel like that really helps the flow of traffic. There's rarely any time that I see anything backed up. So it's not like there's a traffic light there. I don't know if this was part of the discussion, but the flow of traffic really moves very smoothly, and I never have any issue getting to school to drop my kids off or pick them up. And that's it.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Vlada Epstein. My apologies. Go ahead, Ms. Epstein.
Hi, this is Joshua Levin Epstein. For the record, that's L-E-V-I-N, E-P-S-T-E-I-N. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I just wanted to quickly speak briefly in support of the application for Habad LeBovitch. I want to state that as a matter of record, if the school opens in order to reduce traffic, I will ride my bicycle to the school in order to to make sure that there's no traffic. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, last speaker, folks, is Shira Schwartz. Oh, no, oh, gosh, wait, wait, why are the?
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you so much. My name is Shira Schwartz, and thank you to the board and to the Commission and to everybody who's participating in this conversation. My family and my son, most importantly, have been a member, have been members of the Habad community since just before he was two years old. And what I will say to you is that every day that I have dropped my child off at school or if my childcare has dropped my child off at school, the fear of God, forgive the pun, has been put, you know, into me about ensuring that we are not disruptive to our neighbors, ensuring that we are respectful and appropriate of all of our residential neighbors or even commercial neighbors in the area, whether it was at the Mason Street and Lincoln campuses or the Lake Avenue campus. I'm also a public school administrator and have worked in public education for, golly, close to 15 years now and have managed transportation for a number of schools. And when I tell you that it is second to air traffic control, that's that's not even a joke, it actually is. But when I tell you that the Habad campus, even when there is camp running with with a vastly larger number of children, that traffic is smooth, it is appropriate, it is not disruptive. And parents, as well as the Darins and all of the folks involved with Camp Ghan and with the Habad preschool are so cognizant of being respectful and appropriate. I wish that I could underscore that more. And so we, as a community, as well as the Darins, as our stewards and leaders, we are committed to ensuring that everything that we are doing is in the best interest of the community and in in the spirit of being good neighbors. And so I just speak to support all of this for all of our children and for our community and our growing Jewish community here in Greenwich. Thank you so much for your time and your attention.
Thank you. The next speaker is Yelena Mayman. Mayman? If you would go ahead, ma'am, you need to unmute.
Hi there, how are you? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to speak. I would also like to speak in support of Habad. I am an 18-year-old resident of Greenwich. Three of my children went to Habad preschool and Camp Ghan. I am also a current teacher at Habad. And I just want to let you know that we work really hard on our end to adhere to all the rules before us and really work really hard not to be disruptive to the neighbors. My children also attend other private schools in the area, so I know what it's like to sit in a pickup line and a drop off line for 20 to 30 minutes a day. That definitely doesn't happen here. So please trust me when I tell you that we we 100% work super duper hard. And please give us an opportunity to continue on doing what is so wonderful for the community and that we're trying so hard to do here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, ma'am. Our last speaker is Orin Izakoff.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'll first start by saying thank you very much for the Committee, for the other professionals involved here. My name is Orin Izakoff. I joined the community from from New York City, like many other folks, and moved here 15 months ago, although admittedly I've been working for six and a half years in town and reverse commuting. So certainly very familiar with the landscape. You know, at the risk of now being the, you know, eighth or ninth person to tell you that the noise isn't bad or the traffic isn't bad.
Yeah, and we always ask people not to repeat things. So if you want to say, I agree with what they said, that's really good. That'll that'll do for us.
I was just about to say that. I'll give you my anecdotal examples. Go look at Greenwich Country Day on Fairfield. It takes me 35 minutes to go for my run at Bruce Park, driving down North Street because of the amount of traffic there, and they have no internal people directing traffic. Go take a look at North Street School on a North Street as well, major, major backups. You know, so anyway, you get the picture. Habad actually has people internally and their own security staff that are manually directing individual cars in and out. So traffic situation, not so bad. And the noise, I've never heard noise. So I agree. The bigger point I wanted to make is we obviously have a number of professionals here that are hired by competing interests. We have Attorney Kaufman, and we have the attorney for Habad, we have Mr. Mann. I think we need to need to take a really big step back. I've had the privilege of going to private schools and elementary schools, similar to which in Greenwich. I went to school on the main line, a school very similar to Brunswick. Long story short, I've never seen such a warm, happy environment as Habad School. The community and the charity that this organization does is unparalleled. And this is somebody who's been to multiple private schools and spent 10 years in postgraduate education. I've never seen anything like it. I know my time is up, but to give me 10 more seconds, please, I would request that all professionals involved here, the Commission, the attorneys on all sides, this is an opportunity to make a difference in a community. And it would be a massive loss and a massive failure to not get this done. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, you can take down the clock now, Patrick. Okay, so, Mr. Hegney, I don't think the public really gave us new facts. I think, you know, there's support for the community, we knew that. And I think one of the things is the incremental traffic. It's, we we fight every incremental car as much as we do, and you know that, every every tree loss. So, Mr. Hegney.
I can't give up on those trees. I understand.
I believe you don't need to make a closing statement at this time because we've left it at, we're going to leave it open. We will reconvene on the 4th. I've made it clear to the public that all the material will be available on the Thursday afternoon before New Year's because Friday is the holiday and that we will see everybody who wants to join us on Tuesday. And we hope you all work terribly hard between now and then.
That's our intention, Madam Chair, and we'll get that to you soon as we can.
Okie doke, folks. So we're leaving this item open and moving on. Thank you, everybody, for joining us and wishing everybody a Happy New Year.
Bye.
And Mr. Hegney gets to go away for a while, right?
No, I'm going home.
Okay, you're going to go home now. All right, our next application.
If that's okay.
Yeah, that's okay. Enjoy the holiday. Our next application is Michael Newman, Robert Aronson, and Philip Ansti. This is for the zoning map amendment at 190, 200, 240, and 248 Lake Avenue. And the request is to go from an RA2 to an R12. And who's representing the applicant, Mr. Laurel? Is Michael Newman? Okay. And Mr. Newman, I think you need to unmute.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commission. Thank you, guys, for your time tonight. I'll try and do my best to stay as brief as possible. Michael Newman, I live at 200 Lake Avenue with my wife and three kids. We've been here about five years. I'm returning tonight after having done a pre-application review for this rezoning. It's four properties located in a dense section of Lake Avenue where you've got an intersection of three different zones, RA2, R12, and R7. As you may recall from our prior discussion, the four homes originally date back to the 1800s before Rosemary Hall actually was founded and created a campus behind us. I don't believe these properties, as far as I know, were ever owned by the school, but they were significantly affected in the 1957 rezoning and the 2003 rezoning, which I've highlighted in the narrative. You know, today what we've got is four properties with extreme degrees of legal nonconformities that they've been grandfathered into. And I see this application is correcting that sort of historical oversight of falling between the cracks and an opportunity to decrease nonconformities. I proposed R12 because it was contiguous with many of the abutting properties and felt that these four homes were in keeping with the character of the properties of that abutting R12 section while eliminating the vast majority of nonconformities. I would ask. I would ask Mr. Leroux to bring up an exhibit titled "Nonconformities Matrix" when he has a moment. I think this is the best exhibit to see why R12 is appropriate. Are you able to do that? Great. Specifically, if you look at the bottom of this page, it sort of shows how the nonconformities go from, you know, marked in red to conforming in green. And we get progressively sort of more green in the table. Mr. Leroux, are you having trouble finding that one?
I'm having an internet issue here. Sorry, guys.
Yeah, it's, he, he has a pokey town computer.
Okay, well, um, I guess I would just, you know, was going to speak to a couple of points on that. Basically, that when you look at the highlighted R12 proposed rezoning across lot size, frontage, shape, FAR setbacks, et cetera, we really get to a point of almost total compliance. There's one or two items that still don't comply, like the frontage, where two of the houses are off by a matter of feet, like three feet, five feet, not 20 or 25 feet. Likewise, you know, all the houses come into compliance from an FAR standpoint, except for 240 Lake, which will be still over its, you know, the new rezoned FAR, but by a much smaller degree. And then the two other things, the front setbacks that are still outstanding, it's because there's a garage that will never conform to any of the section 205, 6205 requirements. Similarly, my own home, which has a shared party wall, will never sort of fully be in compliance with those regs. But I think this table really highlights how we go from sort of complete noncompliance and nonconformity to a much greater degree of conformity. Finally, listening sort of to the briefing call yesterday, Mr. Leroux had raised in his report, and there was a great deal of discussion on the possibility of subdivision, though he suggested it was highly unlikely, to use his own words. Given the unusual lot shapes and sizes, I would further agree with Mr. Borlak that it doesn't even seem remotely possible to me. I re-listened to the transcript this afternoon, and it seemed like there might have been some confusion. Mr. Leroux suggested that there might be six to eight properties coming out of the rezoning. And it almost sounded like, it sounded like some members of the commission mistook that to suggest six to eight additional properties in addition to the four properties.
Yes, we did.
Which would not actually mathematically or practically work in any possible way. The acreage doesn't add up. Even if all four properties were bought and raised, you couldn't get to those kind of numbers. I would say theoretically 248 might be capable of subdividing. I would have you note, though, that's the house abutting the drive to 270 Lake Avenue and the Field Club, which is, as you know from the prior applicant, a hotly sort of debated drive. And I think right now, my neighbor's got a beautiful home from the 1800s. I just, I think it's in great condition. I just don't think there's value there in subdividing it, my personal take, obviously. And then I guess the very, very last thing I would just add, I've got several letters of support that came in this week, as well as I originally submitted a petition with 12 residential neighbors that had signed on in support. And then I would just say if we're, when we're not using the matrix, maybe the map that has numbered properties might be the easiest one for discussing this rezoning application. I think you can see a fair amount from it, and it's easy to refer to the property labels if a member has a commission about a specific property. Thank you very much, and I look forward to your question.
Hold on a second. So Patrick, if you're not able to share the zoning map, does anybody need to look at it?
I can share it now, thank you, Madam Chair. If anyone needs to see it, I'm happy to put that up.
Yeah, why don't you just go ahead and just, let's just go through them so everybody's on the same page.
Sure. So again, this is lots in.
Color, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
This is, this one might not have that map in it. I'm sorry.
Okay, now, um.
Well, this, this section right here is a little bit clearer.
Yeah, there you go. You're so good at that. That's awesome. Okay. And then if you would.
And again, I think, Madam Chair, you correctly rephrased what was said at the briefing. The, the issue was that the lot area of the four lots, I was talking about a range of potential creation of lots, not in addition to, but as a net sum. So that was, Mr. Newman's correct. We were not talking about more lots. We were talking how many lots out of the existing four. So when I say eight, but again, that's, I would, I would categorize that as highly unlikely, almost impossible probably, but that, you know, just based on the area alone, there is enough area in the, in these four lots to be subdivided that, to possibly create eight lots, but that's, again, small p, possible.
Commissioners, questions?
And we've seen all this before.
Yes. Yes, but we saw it. So, but now it's before us, so it's, do you need any clarification on this? No, dead silence. Okey dokey. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on the rezoning on Lake Avenue? Please raise your virtual hand. Nope, we don't have anybody from the public who wishes to speak. Now, the last time, Mr. Newman, we did have, one of the residents had objected. Has that objection been withdrawn, to your knowledge?
I don't think that applicant, I mean, they were sent notices about my application. I had spoken with all my neighbors at length about the application, my intentions, what I thought the risks to them were. I think you answered to both of them, and I can speak to it again, but one applicant seemed to want to be included in the application, and I think you spoke to that. And I think the other applicant, you know, suggested that they had bought in R2A and that they deserved to keep it as R2A. And I, I actually think back to your comments on the briefing call where you were sort of talking about what, you know, keeping the character relative to which zone. And I think it's an interesting thing because I don't think it's particularly the zone that is determining the, you know, the character of our neighborhood. Our neighborhood has a great number of houses that are all very close to the road that face each other in, which is kind of unusual on Lake Avenue. Most of Lake Avenue, you think of as setback. Even as you go closer to the traffic circle, you end up with a huge portion of Rock Ridge. And the homes that are sort of backed up to Lake Avenue, they look into Rock Ridge, and they have homes only on one side of Lake Avenue. Our section actually has the homes sort of right there, and this happens to be right where you've got R12, R7, and this R2A, you know, four homes sort of all touching. And I thought R12 was, you know, as I've said, sort of more conservative than going to R7, which doesn't actually improve some of the sort of impossible nonconformities that will never be removed.
Right, okay. Thank you. So the commission has no further questions. Are you in agreement with closing this item at this time? Does anybody disagree with closing it? No? Okay, we will close this item. Thank you very much, Mr. Newman.
Thank you very much.
Our next application is to Deerfield Drive in the R12, and this is to remind you that this is for that use of the basement space to get, which is now three tenants and which I believe, I'm not seeing Mr. Tessie. Mr. Leroux.
I'm taking a shot that John T. is Mr. Tessie, but.
Ah, yes, I bet that's right. I got him. It's John F. and John T., I believe. Okay. Hello, John T. Mr. Basili, for the record, this is Mr. Tessie. T E S E I.
I don't know why that's switched.
Okay, so, Mr. Tessie, I believe that you sent us a revised floor plan this afternoon.
Well, I didn't send you, I sent you the correct floor plan. I made a typo, which is pretty embarrassing because it was only a one paragraph letter. But I managed to convert a B to a C, so I can understand the confusion. But yes, I've sent you the correct floor plan and admitted my error. Both.
Yeah, we spent, I think we all spent a lot of time this weekend trying to figure out. We're really confused. Okay, but it doesn't take much to confuse us sometime. Okay. So, Mr. Leroux, could you toss up that plan, please, that floor plan?
Yeah.
Well, wait, Mr. Tessie, you need to stay here. He's left. Patrick, if you're not able to get it up, it's fine. I think we can just get the applicant to put it on the record. You can hold it up to your camera if you want, Mr. Tessie. It's okay. I, I know that, I know that the internet's giving you problems. Mr. Tessie, you now have three tenants. You have a space that's 952 square feet, which will be occupied by the Science Life Foundation. Potentially, all we ask that it be, and all these tenants have to do is be not-for-profit. Space B is, at this point, the United Way, again, a not-for-profit. Then we were confused about space C.
Space three is going to be occupied.
By a separate tenant?
No, no, no. It's going to be occupied by the foundation. The, the Living Science Center.
Okay, so the, the science.
Trying in very inartfully to say.
Okay, so tenant space C is actually where you have not-for-profit's office use. You are actually saying that tenant A and tenant C are the same tenant.
Yeah, I, I had tried to get Mr. Molnar to.
All right, now, so.
Correct that today, but he was very, not to correct it, but to make it simpler.
Okay, so, Mr. McRae, if we were to decide this, we would be saying, unlike what, now, we've got a notice problem here. Oh, no, three tenant spaces. That's okay. It's three tenant spaces still, but there's only two tenants. And that we are restricting this then to two tenants, Mr. Tessie.
Which is perfectly fine.
Okay, so where you call it tenant A and tenant B, we're going to call that just A for both spaces. And if we were to decide this, it would be one, you're going to have two tenant, two tenants occupying three different spaces, just to keep the public notice correct.
Yes, correct.
Okay, and then tenant B space is fine. All right, that squares us, I believe.
Wait, before, before we move on, I just want to make sure I really understand this. Mr. Tessie, tenant B is United Way?
Yeah, that one's cool. He, he always had that one right.
Okay, and A and, A and C is the foundation?
Yes.
Living Science Center Foundation.
So you're gonna stop calling it C, and both of those spaces are A?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, Mr. McRae?
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying. It doesn't work very well that way, but I understand what you're saying.
Right.
Yeah, I, I sent a little explanation. I don't know if you've seen it.
No, you, we got buried.
I said to Bianca about the foundation and its purpose.
Yeah, we saw that. That, that's, that's okay. That's fine.
Yeah, okay.
It's actually very exciting, that it's finally moving forward, this project, but.
Oh, but the 501(c)(3) has existed for quite some time.
Well, it's taken a number of years to get the county of Westchester to come along. It's been John's dreams near the Maria Ferrari Children's Hospital to build this life science center. And they just got a grant from the state too, so that's, it actually happened coincidentally with this application, and it
Okay.
turned out to be the perfect fit. Now they can actually have employees and raise some money.
Well, wait a second. How many employees in that space?
Just going to start out with a few because it's been sitting on.
You have a parking limitation here and a.
No, I allocated the parking based on your floor area. It's all in my letter.
Okay.
Allocate parking based upon, based upon the, the one, one per 150 square feet for that, those premises, which is far more than.
Okay, so the applicant noted that there are three employees and that there have never been more than 10 people. The proposed office use would require 17 parking spaces. And you will not exceed the need for those 17 parking spaces?
For the, for the residential, for all the office space. We don't envision that. And as I also pointed out in my original letter, we allocate, how much spaces, parking spaces are allocated to the cabinet company, which really.
Well, I just read that to you. If you were listening, I just said the applicant, that's you, indicated that the existing retail tenant, Christopher Peacock kitchens, does not utilize the required 15 spaces for this, for this.
Right.
What I would suggest, since you're taken away, is maybe that you consider, why don't we just ask you to mark the spaces for whom they are?
They're, they're all non, it's, they've never been marked.
I know, but I'm asking you to do it now.
We'll do it if you like it, but why do you want to have, the point I'm making to you is this. Here's why I don't think you want to market. Because the people who use the most of the parking spaces are, are the residents. And, and when they have, you were talking earlier, one of the applications, I think it was the assisted living, about holidays and people with visitors.
We're just saying nine to five. I would just say weekdays, reserved weekdays for, if you would. We'll talk to Mr. Ferrari. You guys figure it out, but what I'm a little.
We'll, we'll take, we, we need to move forward. The United Way really.
Okay, I know they really have to do, move, move forward. So another possibility is, let's just make it compliant. What I'm worried about is that you're suddenly going to bring in more people. So if you figure out a way of keeping your parking compliant.
Happy with the limitation required under the regulations for office space, which is one per whatever.
Okay.
So you can make, you can emphasize section six, I think it's 101.
Pat, rescue me. Six one. No, it's not 101.
It's one, uh, one, what the heck is it?
What, I'm sorry.
20% limit on.
That one, yeah.
On office, based on parking space.
6155, oh, that's residential. Okay, we'll figure it out when we, when we get there. Does the commission?
Mr. Tessie, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the parking is not conforming on the site. This is not making it worse. It is, in fact, making it status quo or better, and therefore.
Parking is actually conforming even with that gross 17 spaces for the retail that only use. That's the beauty of this park. If you go there, it's an empty parking lot all the time.
So then I'm, I'm not understanding the conversation about parking, because if.
Chairman, all of it is.
I got nervous. He fed me something that, he fed me something that.
I got, I got you. There is, there is a wording in the letter that confused.
No, no, he just stuck his foot in his, sorry, Mr. Tessie. He just said, and now we're starting to hire employees for the foundation, and I'm like, wait, wait.
Comment was, sorry, the comment was, you wouldn't need office space if you didn't have any employees. But I was trying to say, the comment was made, it's been around since 2013, and I was saying, finally, they got the lease from this county, and they also got a state grant, and, and this is turning into a reality. And the whole purpose of the foundation is to help raise money for the, for the lifetime center that, that is the whole purpose, the, that there will be a children's learning center in this complex. So I didn't mean to, to suggest, I was trying to say a good thing. But the number of employees on this property between United Way, the.
Yeah, okay, so here's, let me say it.
And this is very, very low, so whatever.
Let me, let me say it clearer. Let me say it clearer. You have 42 total spaces. You need 11 for the residential. You are reducing the kitchen cabinet place to 10, was it? 10?
10 have more, no more than three or four, but they have 17 under the zoning regulations.
Okay, so, I can't remember, you either.
We're not reducing anybody. I pointed out that we were, oh, okay, to be clear, if you look at the written letter, we were overparked by eight. We used that up on this office space, so now we're.
Got it. You only need eight spaces. Got it. We're good. Okay, so Nick, here's the wording. The allocation of the parking, they've got 42 spaces in total. And they are using eight spaces. They, they would have eight spaces available for the Christian, the, the health science thing. They have 11 spaces available for the office, and then they have the over, the excess amount of spaces for Christopher Peacock.
Right.
Or, which is.
What about the residential?
The residential is 11.
Okay.
In total.
Eight spaces for life science?
Eight spaces. This is, I believe, what he's saying, eight spaces. Eight spaces, this is, I believe, what he's saying, eight spaces for life science, eleven spaces for United Way. And then how many spaces are, you would need for Christopher Peacock?
Well, it's the crazy part, under the regulations, seventeen, but they don't, they don't.
If you tell me that, I'm not asking you that question. I'm not asking you, okay.
Okay.
An applicant has three employees, and, okay, they never have more than ten people in the space, so they need, they need how many, Pat, at one fifty?
Fifteen?
Christopher, no. Christopher, you do it by hundred and fifty.
No, so it's, uh, hold on, uh.
It's usable, usable versus actionable.
Okay, so Christopher Peacock has fifteen spaces right now. Not seventeen, according to the letter. And they need one per a hundred and fifty of usable. We just have to do that math before we make a decision, folks, so we can just add it up.
One point I'm trying to make to you is that you're better served not telling them to, if you want to say that there always have to be the, the ten available.
I getcha, we'll, we'll figure it out when.
Residents, I get that, but I would not, I would not lock up the commercial space, because it's a benefit to the residential unit.
Right, so we have a different way of putting it. We just said, you have forty-two total spaces, you're gonna allocate eleven, eleven, or go to the residential, and the rest will be divided to the commercial, we're good.
Okay, fine, it works.
And then we just need to do, Nick, just do a quick math and make sure that works on a hundred and fifty usable for the commercial, it's in a table in the app.
Yeah.
Okay, if you don't mind, anybody who's good at arithmetic, okay. Does anybody else in the commission want to ask a question? Everybody's looking a little fried.
I can't understand why.
I know, well, it's just every meeting's like this these days. Okay, um, anybody in the public wish to speak on To Dear Field, please raise your virtual hand. No, okay, Mr., does anybody object to closing this application at this time? In spite of Mr. Tessie's best efforts to hopelessly confuse us?
No, I, I know. I wanted to spend some.
No more talking, Mr. Tessie, no more talking, okay.
Holidays, well.
No more talking.
Open up another can of worms.
Don't, don't start anything, because we'll, we'll go down that road with you. Okay, we are closing this application, folks. Happy, happy holidays, Mr. Tessie.
Yep, and safe and healthy. All the best to all of you.
Bye. All right, there's an applicant who needed to stop while he was ahead. It's okay, kept getting himself into more holes. All right, the next application is Eight Fox Run Lane. I didn't miss anything, did I? No, Eight Fox Run Lane, final site plan and special permit. This is a must-open tonight, um, and the applicant is Mr. DeAndrea. And he has his hand up. Mr. DeAndrea, you should be all set.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, we're all set to go, I'm gonna give you the short version.
Okay, yeah, you, you saw your role model was not doing a good job at that, right?
Were you my role model? Was the chairman my role model?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. DeAndrea.
Very simply, I represent Jennifer York. She is the owner of the property. It's five point four acres. It's in the RA two zone. She has, um, five, as I said, five point four, well, um, in excess of what's required. Recently, the commission approved a revision of lot lines that resulted in, uh, Mrs. York transferring half an acre to the property to the north, which was now known as fourteen Fox Run Lane. I offer that just as reminder of the history. Our current proposal is to construct a single-family home. We concede to the fact that it is more than a hundred and fifty thousand cubic feet in total on the property as proposed. Um, we are proposing to do the single-family home, six bedrooms, with a septic system, driveway, tennis court, pool house and pool. Uh, we made a very extensive, um, presentation to the wetlands agency. At that time, it was, um, very, uh, heavily vetted about trees, conservation, separation from wetlands, and the location of the septic system. They did ultimately approve a permit, two thousand twenty-one seventy-six, in July of two thousand twenty-one. On that application, um, involved a great deal of discussion about the removal of trees. Um, those trees were marked before removal. Doreen Carol Andrews from the Wetlands Agency inspected every tree to be consistent with the approved plans. So in summary, very quickly, while it is a request for a special permit, we have approved, uh, received approval from the Health Department for a six-bedroom system. We have approval from the Engineering Department, um, regarding the drainage, uh, design and computations. The CEO did issue a permit, I mean, a memo indicating no objection to the, um, approval. However, subsequently, there was a correction, um, so that the architect was aware that the stairwell in the dwelling had to be counted in the FAR as a minor point. And also, the, the, um, original plans by the architect still included a, um, indication of a cooktop. We know that's not permitted. The architect's been advised, and he'll, um, officially correct all that.
If you would kindly relabel the plans on the main floor, and you call that not a kitchen, not a kitchenette, but a bar, wet bar or something.
Yes, yes.
I know the CEO didn't have a problem, but I do. I don't, don't want two kitchens, anything that looks like two kitchens in a main house.
It'll definitely be corrected and.
Okay, now, your next set of comments is from Conservation regarding the tree removal. That's what I'd like to hit first.
Yes.
You're getting rid of thirty-seven large trees.
I tried to allude to that already, no.
I know you alluded to it, but you knew what we were gonna circle back.
That's why I alluded to it.
Yeah, good, okay. Can you give us more tree replacement?
We always strive to put in more trees, and this particular landscape plan was presented to the Wetlands Agency, at which time, um, Ms. Mock had comments to be made, and she did make them. So the, uh, planting plan that was submitted to the Wetlands Agency and ultimately approved.
But their authority is only regarding, regarding the wetlands mandate, and we're addressing the whole site, Mr. DeAndrea.
We fully agree with that, and the landscape plan, as all I'm trying to point out, is very intense and very thorough, presented by William Kenny. Um, again, we did have several hearings at the Wetlands Agency, a great deal of it had to do with the amount of, number of trees, where they were and how they had to be treated during the design of the septic system.
Mr. DeAndrea, they have a specific mandate, which is wetlands. We're covering the whole site. And you keep coming back to the wetlands hearing, and I keep wanting to hear you, just give me some more trees here.
Okay, we're gonna give you more trees, and I just tried to tell you that we've already given you more trees, and we're gonna continue to give you more trees. I just want to point out that we had a great deal of discussion and modified septic system, modified the driveway, modified the pool house. We did all that in order to save trees. Commentary was given by Ms. Mock in that, in conjunction with that.
I getcha, okay, I gotcha.
So we're, we're gonna work with everybody, especially Alexandra. I've set up a policy these days where I want everybody in the landscape plan to go meet with Alexandra, and then soon as she's available, we take advantage of it, and we're working it out ahead of time. In this particular case, we did it also. But yes, I understand this, um, item number two in her comments dated December tenth. Um, I have no problem conceding to that, um, as factual, and we'll meet those parameters, I'm sure.
Okay, I'm just scrolling through, um, I'm not seeing any other out. Do you think that you could, off the top of your head, give us some sort of commitment on the environmental piece? Because I'm not seeing that you have any other outstanding issues on this.
No, there's no other, no outstanding issues at all. Health, DPW, zoning, all set, conservation, wetlands, permit in order. So all you're concerned about right now is meat coming as close as we can.
You did submit, and of course, you have so much FAR left over, so you should be in good shape, okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Um, all right, um, we need some sort of, okay, well, we're gonna condition that you add that you're going to approach it two for one. Do you think you can do that?
Truth. I can't, I can't speak to that up here, because I, I haven't counted the trees on the landscape plan, but, um, we're going to meet or exceed the, um, intensity of, um, planting that's on the approved landscape plan. And if it turns out that it's two to one, I have no problem with it. I think that, but, you know, here, here, let's, let's do it this way, um, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
Alexandra suggested that the revegetated area should cover at least fifty percent of the proposed increase, which she types at about fifteen thousand. I don't think we have any problem whatsoever in meeting that criteria.
Okay, you got that, Nick?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, Mr. DeAndrea, the next time you're looking at one of these, because you've got the engineering head focused on it, could you look at how one would work with maintaining tree canopy when one is doing a development like this? We keep trying to figure out, we've been looking at other towns and cities that have regulations to do that, and we're trying to wrap our heads around it. If you have input, would you mind sending it to Katie?
Can I give you something real quick? On that aspect, I'm not an arborist, not an arborist, but I, when I walk the sites and I look up at the canopies, and I actually did it at my own home recently, I had one, um, hickory tree actually stifling the other.
Yes.
And you see the deformity that comes up, so I think there's something to be said for culling some of the trees, to let the specimen trees grow.
Or to let the taller, you want the taller ones to grow, you want the overstory ones to grow, because they provide you a higher environmental benefit.
What, I don't necessarily agree with that. What we also see is that some of the trees.
Send that all to Katie in an email.
We're just too high up in the air. When the trees grow to climax like that, they have no lower branches, that's not good. So you have to look and see the quality of the tree, and when two trees are close together, then maybe one is better than two, because they get stifled.
Um, we're gonna have a public hearing on this, so if you wanna, if you wanna give Katie thoughts, but probably in January or February, we're gonna have a public, we were hoping to do it in September, you know how slammed we are, but we'd like to have a public hearing on this and talk about how we approach canopy protection. That's normally what everybody's looking at, is, is maintaining canopy cover.
I agree with the idea, but I think you have to look at it on, onsite and, and.
So we need to give you guys the flexibility, okay. All right, does anybody on the commission have any questions on Eight Fox Run? I've, I'm seeing a hand, no? No, okay, I've got a hand up in the public, Mr. Hoffman. If you are here to speak on Eight Fox Run, if you would kindly go ahead. Mr. Hoffman, you just muted yourself. There, no, um, if you would unmute, please. There you go, you're all set.
I'm on Tony's team on this, working with him on this project, and I've been trying to get his attention by texting him. One of the big things.
Tony doesn't do that, does he?
He does occasionally. It's, that's the only thing I like better about live meetings, is that I can actually pinch him as I'm sitting next to him.
Yeah.
Attention.
Katie's laughing so hard, she had to mute herself. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Hoffman.
One thing we were gonna point out is how much of this five-and-a-half-acre parcel is actually untouched by this element.
Right.
Because that's, I think, a significant.
No, I mean, and, and we're good at, I mean, that part of the arithmetic, we're really good at. You have a point oh four FAR, and you're allowed a point oh nine. You have a five-acre piece of property, and you're, you are leaving a good chunk of it undisturbed, much appreciated.
A lot of it is undisturbed, and so I just wanted Tony to make that.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I'll put it in focus, I didn't want to get into that specifically. I know Jim and I spoke about it, but I was prepared for that. So what we're doing is.
Calling you out, Tony, now.
I know, I'm doing it, I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna do it.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
We agreed, we agreed that we're going to have more impervious area than previously existed.
And you're compensating for it. Don't you have, I think you did driveways, didn't you?
Yes, but, but more than that, what, what Jim is pointing out, that we're, our whole development area takes up about a third of an acre. And we have a five-point-four acre site, so that's significant. Once you build the home, which we are building basically in the same area as the original, on top of a, a knoll, then we have very little impact. The majority of the property, is what Jim is pointing out, is left undisturbed. So we're, we're taking about a third of an acre out of a five-and-a-half-acre parcel to develop a home in a very compact, um, portion of the property. And I think that's significant.
Okay, all righty, um, and thank you, Mr. Hoffman, for pinching Mr. DeAndrea, that was helpful. There should be something on his cell phone that does that, I'm sure. Um, any, nobody else has any comments, correct?
Nope.
And everybody's in favor of closing this application, please nod, please wave, or whatever.
Yep.
You are not. Okidok. Um, thank you very much, Mr. DeAndrea, this application is now closed. Our next application would be the, the proposal for the short-term rental. Katie, are we doing that?
I don't think so. I think we said we were gonna postpone.
So let me, let me just ask quickly, does any, is anybody in the public here to speak on the short-term rental application? Please raise your virtual hand if you came to say something about the short-term rentals. All right, so just quickly, we had gotten some feedback from Mary Jenkins.
So this is not postponed then, because if, if we're.
Okay, well, let's just, whatever you want to do, let's postpone it, good.
Okay, I would just know, it's not gonna be on until the second January meeting. That's where we're at with the meetings. We have to do some shuffling.
Mr. Basili, you can go home. Wait, and before you leave, I'm wishing you the very happiest, um, twenty twenty-two. And thank you always for sticking with us and, um.
On behalf of the entire commission.
Yes, on behalf of the, I don't like to speak for them, but I will, I, I think they.
She does anyway.
I will anyway, yeah, well, we got you the other day, didn't we?
Yeah.
So we will, um, thank you very much. Have a wonderful holiday, and we really appreciate, uh, all the help you give us.
Well, thank you, and, uh, best wishes to you all.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
All righty, now, um, we have Renamba of Renamba Greenwich LLC. No, we do, we do.
They asked, they asked that it be closed, Madam Chair, and then.
Yes, but I have to, we, we said we wanted to consider moving the preliminary to final. The site.
I, I was under the impression that we were gonna close, uh, the, both applications, and then Mr. Uh, Cohen was gonna let us know when he was going to refile. I thought that was the last.
No, that's only on the zoning map amendment. On the site plan, what we said to him was that we would move it to final, so he could have guidance, um, going forward.
And then he said that Mrs. Mrs. Cronin had a copious notes, and that we, he had.
Hold on a second.
I, I, I thought I heard him say that he was gonna withdraw and refile, as to that one.
Yeah.
Michelle, what did you hear?
Hi.
Hi.
I, I'm with you.
You're with me, right?
Yeah, I, I think, I thought that what I heard was we're gonna, uh, withdraw the rezoning, and you guys are, we're gonna close and then give us guidance on the preliminary.
Well, Michelle is also a people, so this is not really fair.
So she can please you, and she can please you and Baralek, or she can please me.
Oh, I'm pleased anyway. Excuse me.
I would not be here still if I didn't think you were gonna, uh, decide.
That's why I called on you, because I was watching you, and I was like, okay, these people are telling me we're not deciding, but there she is waiting for us to decide it. Okay.
Wait, excuse me a second. I thought he said that he would like to close that, the, the zoning, but uh, he might want, he might later withdraw.
He might.
Yes, that's correct. He doesn't.
So we're not touching. And, but then he said, yes, Ms. Albin, if you are ready to move it to final, that would be very helpful to us.
I agree.
Okay, all right, so folks, um, this is gonna be a little different from how Nick does it. Um, what we're gonna do with this is Nick's not seated, but you don't have to go away or anything. So you know who's seated is Albin, Goss, Low, Baralek and Jeski. What I'm gonna do is read my list as a motion to move it to final. Then y'all jump in with anything else you want to add, so that we have a complete list. So, um, I'm just gonna do it as a motion without, you know, any detail. I hereby move that the preliminary coastal site plan and special permit be moved to final with, uh, the following, um, requests, uh, for when the applicant returns. First of all, the applicant shall do a, uh, soils contamination testing and, uh, determine the level of remediation that is needed on the site. Uh, second, the applicant shall, uh, study the accident data at the intersection of Old Track, and that's Ham there, right? And Hamilton Avenue, and propose methods.
Field point, I believe.
Oh, yeah, I can't remember where it changes names.
Yeah, no.
Where, propose methods of alleviating. In addition, the applicant will provide a plan to address. Where, propose methods of alleviating. In addition, the applicant will provide a plan to address overflow parking for major holiday demand. The applicant will continue to work on energy efficiency and sustainability measures. The applicant will address screening for the neighbors adjacent on Stone View per the, per the commitment offered by the applicant. The, the applicant will look at interior, continue to work with interior noise abatement on site and what can be done to minimize noise. A rendering, when the applicant returns for final, a rendering as to the views from the upper floors of the building and the elevation shall be provided. And if there is a possibility of encroaching into the railroad right-of-way for additional planting, we request that the applicant pursue that. I did say the views from the upper floors. In addition, the final site plans and the architectural should include a rendering from the highway side of the development. The landscape plans shall be reviewed particularly for sustainability and environmental contribution by the, with the Conservation Department. The plans shall be compliant with the newly approved MRCO zone to which this will be converted. The applicant shall proceed next prior to returning to the commission, shall proceed to the ARC. And this is, I believe, because we cannot hear them before March. But if poss, if it's possible, we would like to see it first. If it is not possible, within a reasonable timeframe, they should proceed to ARC. And ARC shall review the landscaping and the lighting as well as the building design. Okay, that's what I got, folks. What else do you wanna add to that?
So I, I know that it's, it's, that they do wanna proceed with ARC, Madam Chair, so can we just phrase that that it's okay that they go to ARC?
I'm okay with it, and I didn't hear Nick objecting majorly tonight, and I kinda gave him the opportunity at the end before he had to silence himself. I know he's trying hard. He hates that. Anything else that you guys would like to see on this application that we've left out when it goes to final?
Do we need to say anything about the acoustician?
I think that was included already in the study of interior noise. I was about to make the same question, but I think, I think it's covered by what Marguerite said.
That's insulation from August noise and then noise insulation are, oh, hand in hand, okay.
Interior noise, they do have to comply with the noise ordinance. Don't go dark on me, Victoria. Don't go to the dark side.
You're not talking about people screaming inside. You're talking about-
No, I'm not talking about people screaming inside. The interior noise and also, I don't, they have to meet the town noise ordinance for noise at the property line, so that should not be an issue. And it's whether they can further abate the noise for the residents. And they're gonna work on that. I mean, this is a good firm. They should be able to come up with it. Anything else, you guys, that you can think we should do? Scratch your heads. Dennis, you're staring at the sky. You got ideas?
Oh, you covered, no, you covered the one, the noise abatement. I asked them about it. They contain, they're experts at this. I think they're underestimating it, but you know, they're, they're gonna build the project. We brought it up before, we brought it up again tonight.
Marguerite, I, I think your comments covered the location of the trees that they were moving. That's, that's basic. I'm sure that'll be in the next documents.
Yeah, I mean, we've asked them also to work with conservation before they come forward.
Right.
We asked for the soil, I, we did ask in the meeting, and, and Patrick, Katie, maybe throw this into the decision letter as well, that we do expect them to have a plan to ensure that there is not, you know, soil compaction on site afterwards, and also that, that clean soils are brought in. But I think we covered all that. I'm pretty good with the overall design and building. I just wanna make sure that it works smoothly at this point.
Don't forget the donuts.
The donuts?
Yeah, the donuts.
Nick is bringing donuts and I'm showing up.
Right. We're counting trees all on the site.
Guys, we have donuts at every meeting. Where have you guys been?
I don't, I don't know, but I just wanna point out that, that, as Robert gets referred to him, Secretary McRae's been shaking his head a little bit. He's been just completely hamstrung.
But we told him we were gonna, I've been threatening him about this, you know, for days. Okay, I know he hates it.
Can we make that an official title? It's just Secretary McRae. Just, it should be addressed.
All right. Okay. Did I leave anything out? Are you guys good?
Good.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
I think Lil beat it by the nose. All right. I'm in favor of Mr. Jeski. Wait, wait, I gotta get this right.
You're correct.
Jeski.
Jeski. Barilak?
Hi.
Lo, we got? Lo, Goss?
Hi.
Albin is also I. Okay, so we did it five-nothing. Madam Cronin, we wish you a wonderful holiday season. And we are looking forward to seeing you next year. And thank you again for organizing that great session with EMAC.
Absolutely. I thought that was great, too.
That was cool. I know, I just didn't understand half of what they said, but it was cool. Thanks a lot.
All right. Mary, happy new year, guys.
All right. Away we go. Now Nick is on stage. Nick, midpoint.
Midpoint? No.
No, 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 not midpoint, sorry. Okay. No, no, Michael Newman, Michael Newman.
Right, okay. Bear with me on this one, because I we haven't done a map in a while.
What, do you guys wanna discuss it real fast now that we're in decision mode?
It's just like a zoning text amendment, Mr. McRae, you know.
Do you guys have any thoughts you wanna share?
On?
On this in general?
The motion.
Before we go to the motion? Any input? I know that's not Robert's rules of order is the motion has to go on the floor first, but-
It's, it's interesting. I think actually, we were, we were kind of hashing through, you know, what was the real reason for this? I think we kind of figured this out. They really can't subdivide too much. It's kind of an odd, when you take a look at the maps, it's a really odd situation, because one side of the street's got little lots. These things are little lots on the other side of the street, and it always kind of makes you wonder what happened? And what were they thinking at the time when they did this?
Oh, it just happens. It just happens when you-
Yeah, but it was, I mean, you take a look at those, some of those layouts.
They weren't thinking. It just happens. You'll find little glitches in the zoning.
Unfortunately, a huge waste of time to try to get inside the heads of people that are dead for this long.
Hey, please.
Or, or commission members in general.
Hey, they're gonna say that about us now.
And, and they'll be right.
And here's, under state statutes, our job is to reduce nonconformities. By downzoning, we are reducing the nonconformity. And so this request is consistent with our mission in life, if you will, one of our missions in life. And I believe is also consistent, and this is important, with our first goal of the planet, Plan of Conservation and Development, we are maintaining community character. Because the surrounding neighborhood does have, in that immediate area, and I think we've all driven it since it was proposed, does have that size lot. So this does work in the area. So I think we're consistent with a plan of conservation and development, and I think we're consistent with the state statutes in what our mission is.
It was curious that the, the original objector did not, like, you know, didn't come back tonight for whatever reason. And it wasn't clear whether or not that person was-
Don't know. They could have COVID. They might not have seen the notice. You just don't know what happens. You have to do what's right for the town regardless of who speaks.
Yep.
Okay, so based on that, we have our findings and we can rock and roll.
Okay, zoning map amendment, PLPZ 2021-544 to rezone from RA2 to the R12 zone, 190, 202, 40 and 248 Lake Avenue. The map amended will amend the current map for those properties. The commission finds that the suggested amendment is in keeping with objective 1.3 of the POCD. Therefore, motion, motion to approve the map amendment as proposed.
That's it, POCD? Yeah, okay. And did we, um, did we run this by?
Based on performance with the POCD.
Yes, and West Cog had, has no issues.
That's it. And West Cog has no issues. Thank you. That was the last piece missing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Lo has seconded. Mr. Jeski?
Hi.
Mr. Barilak? Wait, did I have that right?
No, I'm not.
No, no. It's Goss. It's, no, wait. It's Goss.
It's Goss.
All right, there you go. Nick?
Hi.
Lo?
Hi.
Albin is also I. This is when you really can tell when the meeting starts to get in your shoulders and your brain. Okay, we now go to two Deerfields. I don't think we really have any discussion on that, right?
I have my calculator ready, Madam Chair, if we're gonna-
Well, it's just, go ahead, just get-
This is the numbers I ran. I had the 11 residential, 22 for United, eight for the foundation. That left 12 leftover to equal 42 for the retail.
No, where we left it is they have 42 in space in total, and 11 are gonna be allocated to the-
Residential units.
Residential. And the balance, you've gotta take the usable square feet and just make sure it works for the 150 per space. And that 42, 42, that's 30, 30, 31 spaces, works to the 150, to the 150 usables.
Yeah, and what I found on that was the 29, 25, 2905 was the square footage. At the 150, it comes out to 20 spaces. You have to round up.
Perfect.
You have to take, sorry, Mr. McRae, you have to take 75% of that number.
75% of the 29, 2905.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, what was the gross again? You, you were using?
I had retail of 2905.
29.
No, that's, that's, no, that's just the retail. That's Peacock. And then you add in the square footage for-
I thought, I thought it was 26 something. I'm sorry.
I'm gonna go to the zoning thing. I gotta find it. Sorry, you guys, but we just have to lay this on the record so somebody, so somebody can figure it out when we're all dead like you guys generously offered us. It would have been fine if he hadn't confused us.
Okay, so 20-
Okay, so here you go. You're usable for commercial retail. Commercial slash, you have office, you have 2513 usable. And you have commercial, the retail is 2179. 15, and that should work out to 11 spaces needed for the office and 15 spaces used, needed for the retail. And 11 spaces needed for the residential, for a total of 15, 26. And that's 37 spaces in total where they have 42 provided.
Right, because we had talked about eight for the foundation, so that worked out. Okay.
Okay, so I think we're good. That's how you word it. And you, okay.
11 residential, 11 United.
Uh, no, it's 11 for the residential. It's 15 for Peacock. Why don't you just say, you, why don't you say 11 residential and the commercial and office? The retail and office combined shall retain the remainder, shall use the remainder of the 42 spaces and you're good. You can just go.
Great.
Which is, yeah, because it's at the same ratio, so it doesn't-
It's the same thing. Okay. I think, I think that's the way we put it together.
Sorry to fuss about a detail, you guys, but later on, it gets important when somebody's trying to figure out what we did. Okay.
Okay, are you ready here?
Yeah.
This is your full drive, PLPZ 2021-450. Final site plan, special permit, applicant seeking approval to convert 3,351 square feet of the building's lower level from storage mechanical to office used located in the R12 zone. Whereas the applicant has appeared before the commission, there's reapplication, PLPZ 2021-432 on October 13th, 21, which is required for a renewed part of violating any special permit. The site is a mixed-use space containing a retail show and 10 housing units. The site maintains a non-conforming FAR point 49 in the R12 zone maximum is point 315. So the commission finds that zoning issue comments and 111721 indicating the proposal meets the requirements that BZR endorsed for project, so permit. So we're to issue comments on 1221 indicating previous issues that have been addressed during the planning and zoning review have been satisfied. And Wetlands issued a permit needs questionnaire dated 10/6/21 indicating no action required. Therefore, motion to approve the application noting the following, that 11 parking spaces will be dedicated for the residential and the remainder of 42 spaces will be spread amongst office space and retail. There will be three new spaces in the office. Space A, space C for nonprofit use.
No, 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 stop. It's space A and space B. And space A is, is divided up, but there are two not-for-profit-
Tenants, three spaces, I think is the, the answer.
Two tenants in three spaces.
Right.
Okay.
And I wrote it down.
Okay, okay.
A and C are together as a nonprofit. That's actually quote foundation space. And B is the third nonprofit, which is the United Way space.
Okay. All right. Okay. You good?
Yeah.
All right.
United Way, A and C nonprofit. Okay.
Okay.
Where was I? Okay, and the applicant should adhere to any and all applicable requirements outlined in their previous administrative and planning and zoning commission decision letters. And the applicant shall address any and all remaining staff or interdepartmental issues.
Okay, do I have a second? Do I have a second? Hello?
Second, if I'm allowed to.
No, you're not seated.
I second.
That works.
I'm working third and fourth, but we can't second.
Oh my God, our hints is a humorous situation. Jeski, how do you vote? I'm keeping him awake. Hey, wait, we started at four just for you and it's only 9:30.
No, don't, don't break Jake's-
Congratulations, and you should be granted a sanctu from the town of Greenwich.
Okay, you voted I. Mr. McRae?
Hi.
Mr. Lo?
Hi.
Mr. Lo?
Hi, again.
There is a Santa Margarita. Ms. Goss?
Hi.
And Albin is also I. And with that, it passes five-nothing. Our next one is Jennifer York at Eight Fox Run Lane.
It should be the Saint Mama Bear.
Mama Bear gonna slap you. That's an inside joke between McRae and me.
Okay, Eight Fox Run Lane application-
It's way too much information, right?
Yes, happy holidays. Final site plan, special permit, applicant seeking approval to construct a 10,105 square foot single-family development, which includes the driveway tennis courts, in-ground swimming pool, poolhouse, blocks, patio, subject systems, stormwater retention, detention system, and associated landscaping. Result of over exceed 150,000 cubic feet in the volume in the RA2 zone. Commission finds that zoning issue comments on 122021 endorsing the proposal, resulting with conditions. The Health Department issued a memo dated 11/8 indicating prior approval of an eight-bedroom centralized subject system. Engineering issue comments on 121421 approving the project for zoning building permit. Wetlands issue permit number 202176, oh, 76 on 7/7/21. And conservation issue comment stated 12/10/21 indicating recommendations- And conservation issue comment stated 121021 indicating recommendations to the proposal. Therefore, motion to approve the application noting the following, zoning comments, the floor area, the stairs needs to be cut in the, on all levels. The poolhouse will need to comply with section 6146B. Conservation memo, restoration planted plan mitigating the loss of the trees. The planting plan should not only offer native trees, but a good percentage of native shrubs, bridle ground cover, the vegetative areas should cover at least 50% the proposed increase in previous surface allocating 100 square feet for, 100 square feet per tree, 25 square feet per shrub, and 1 square feet per perennial. And the applicant should address any and all remaining staff or in departmental issues.
Do I have a second?
Wow, second.
Lo has seconded. Mr. Jeski, how do you vote?
Hi.
Mr. Mackry?
Hi.
Mr. Lo?
Hi.
Ms. Goss?
Hi.
Albin is also I, and with that, the motion passes five-nothing. And we're done for the year. We didn't have a Christmas party this year. We had a weird virtual one last year. But I.
You don't have to say weird, you just say party.
It was weird last year. We were all so spooked. I, I wanted to just take a minute and to thank every single one of you. It is a joy to work with you, even though we, we have our scuffles and disagreements. It's a joy. All of you are just so brilliant and so dedicated and so talented. And I love doing this because you guys are such a pleasure, and I think you're the best commission I've ever seen in all the meetings I ever went as a humble little person in Greenwich. And listen to them, I think, and I think our staff is fantastic, even though you're horribly overworked.
You're here to the staff, all of you guys.
All of you guys. Thank you so much for everything you do, and I, I just really enjoy you guys, and I thank you very much for letting me do this and trusting me with this job.
Well, on the, on the, on behalf of the humble little people that we are, we thank you.
I was gonna say, I, I thought there was a motion made just to move Margarita for saint of the town.
Santa Margarita, yeah.
And I would, I would.
None of my elementary school teachers would buy that in a nanosecond.
You've reformed and become a saint.
I don't think that's possible.
Hey, listen, if Saint Paul can do what he did, you can make a saint.
There you go. All right, you guys, be careful out there, as they said, they used to say on NYPD Blue, if anybody ever saw that. Bye-bye, Dennis, he's gone. And.
Be at four next time. I love starting at four.
Okay, everybody loves four.
I lie at four. I like stopping at eight, too.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I like stopping at 9:35.
Yeah, that's 9:35. That worked.
Paul, I've gotta go now. I'll see you.
Bye-bye. Merry Christmas, everybody. Okay. Everybody be careful. There's so much COVID everywhere now.
Oh, I know.
Don't slip in the COVID.
Yeah, my neighbor just texted me. They had to, he had to cancel his trip home.
From where?
He was going to Italy. They were leaving this afternoon, and he tested positive before he left.
I think I know who your neighbor is. There's only, because it's very strangely, that, that can't possibly be the same. Unless, yeah, anyway.
If you give more than one Italian trying to get home for Christmas, is that what you're saying?
Catherine, the maternity nurse?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, but there's COVID everywhere right now. Okay, so Katie, you watch that sore throat.
Yes, I know. I'm gonna go to bed right now.
Okay, do you have home tests you might want to test?
I did, yeah. Thanks.